Welcome to the October 26, 2021, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag. Thank you. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item; however, citizens wishing to speak on more than three items shall be limited to speaking for a total of ten minutes regardless of the number of items identified.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of regular city council meetings on September 28, 6:30, October 12, 6:30, and October 26, 5:30?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Jordan, a second from Vice Mayor. Going to do it this way. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Carries. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council staff request, respectfully request that Item 8D be tabled to 14 December and that 10B be tabled with no date certain as per the applicant's request.
Do I need to do separately, or... Okay. I need motions?
Item 8D tabled to 14 December. Item 10B just withdrawn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we tabled Item 8D to... I said "D." Well, I said "D."
8D as in dog, for the record.
As in dog, to December 14.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Member Stokoe. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passes.
And Mr. Mayor, I move that we table item 10B, as in boy.
Bravo.
Bravo. Okay.
Do we, do we need to say that as withdrawn or tabled?
Withdrawn.
Okay.
Okay, withdrawn.
All right, so 10B is withdrawn. I have that motion from Member Jordan. I have that second from Vice Mayor. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passes. City Manager.
Onto special recognitions and presentations. We have none. We're on Agenda Item 6A, which is the North Pervard Library District Board Semiannual Report as written. It's included in your agenda packet. No actions required. Onto 6B. This is the Titusville Housing Authority Semiannual Report as written. It's included in your agenda packet. No action is required on council's part.
Thank you, sir.
Onto 6C. Alternate member Chris Childs missed three consecutive meetings August 18th, no September meetings, October 10th, and October 20th. He would like to continue serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. His request to council is attached along with a memo from the chairwoman of the commission. It's noteworthy that all regular members were in attendance for two of the three missed meetings. Thus, the alternate member Childs could have been asked to serve on the August 18th meeting only out of the three meetings he's missed. So, staff is recommending that you review the members' absences and provide direction to staff on this matter.
Anything we want to say before Member Childs speaks? Chris Childs, come on up. Just give us a little rundown, if you would, and your name and address, and then...
Christopher Childs, 5627 Enchanted Avenue, Titusville, Florida. Yeah, I got really bit... I started opening a new business here in Titusville, Titus Landing, and I got busy with that. And then, in the middle of that, middle of planning a grand opening, my youngest nephew took his own life, and I rushed up to Missouri. And so I lost track of some things, and, yeah, I went to the last meeting last week and tried to make up for that, but I still want to serve. I just, I had to get everything straightened out, and I just want to say, well, I'm here that if you have a gun at home and small children, it'd be great to just lock it up, lock up the gun.
Wow, sounds like you have a lot on your plate. Any questions? Vice Mayor question?
Chris, I'm real sorry.
Thank you.
That's hard. But I think, given the circumstances, we should forgive his absences, make him pinky promise not to do it again.
Yes.
And move on. So that would be my motion.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Do I have any cards?
Yes, one card, Stan Johnston.
No. Oh, good, Chris, you're fine. We're on the topic now. We're going to talk about this PNZ excuse of absences. That's what we're going to talk about. The handout we already have?
Stan Johnston. As you know, is that I've been on this volunteering to serve on planning and zoning for a number of years, and that I have been refused this by city council for a number of reasons. And the number of reasons is, has to do with the handout that I've submitted to you. My handout to you today is, is this... This photo, series of photos, it has to do with, not only CRA, but the city of Titusville. And also, it has to do with the, an email that I sent you yesterday.
Hold the clock, stop the clock. We have a guy here we're going to excuse from his absences, or we're not. I need you to talk about Chris Childs and his absences, or not. That's all I need you to do, on this one especially. Kind of important.
So, this is, this is PNZ, and I'm just trying to emphasize...
It's about his absences and his excuse.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Start the clock.
Okay. And also, understand is that I'm a candidate for PNZ.
Speak on that. Speak on that, that's fine.
Okay, okay. You want me to speak on, okay. So I'll speak on. So I'm a candidate for PNZ because of the nonsense and dishonesty that I provided to you in this handout that has about 24 particular items of city's dishonesty and nonsense. And these, these things need to be addressed by PNZ, and I think, so you wanted me to bring it... So I'm bringing that out now. I have been turned down for this position many times, and I certainly would like to attend, and so I don't have any excuses for not attending because I'm not a member, of course. But I'd like you to bear with me is that this is a very particularly important problem PNZ is experiencing because they're not addressing these issues. And so, and I'm also addressing Mr. Childs, is that these particular items, which I have also sent to him, is that they needs to be addressed, and it's important for him to attend these meetings and to address these because no one wants to answer the questions. For example, that I've told you, for example, I've told you, the question about spraying people with piss and poop and fraud and so forth else. So I'm asking, just for about 10 more seconds, I'm asking for the city to get PNZ moving because right now, the city of Titusville is regarding these, these particular items, they've got 24 items, is that the community is, appears to be very apathetic, and it's sad. Thank you.
These three minutes. Do I have that... Oh, any of the cards? Do I have the... Remind me, you're the motion. All right, I have a motion. And a second, let me go roll call vote, please.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. Thank you for your service, and I hope things can go more smoothly. Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just need to say this. I really don't... I know it's a procedure. Chad is a alternate. To me, it just, it doesn't make any sense for something like this to be coming before us. He's an alternate, you know, and I think PNZ is the only group that actually has this requirement. Is that correct?
Far as I know. I haven't checked, but that's the only one I've heard.
And I think, just for clarification, I think you mean by procedure that the alternates must attend?
Come here and...
And then if they have a quorum, then they'll dismiss them. I am not aware. I don't know the rules to everybody.
Yeah. I just think we need to look at that because it, to me, it doesn't make any sense for someone who has excused absences and they are an alternate, they have to come before city council to say, yeah, you can stay on the commission. It doesn't make any sense.
Uh, Member Stokoe?
Yeah, I was just going to add to that. I think we did discuss this last time we were doing alternates, and I feel like that, I think with their meetings, being told to show up at that time, it's hard for them to make plans and then to be told, okay, we don't need you to go home. Like, if it's something that they know in advance, they can then plan for to be there if somebody is going to be out of, like, unable to make it, but I do think that that is somewhat of a hardship, and I would like to get reviewed.
Vice Mayor?
Okay. I'm wondering if there's a way we can figure out ahead of time if somebody is not going to be present so that an alternate can come in.
We actually do that now?
Okay.
All right, let me, just again for clarification while we're on this. We do that now?
Yes, sir.
But is it not the correct understanding that the alternates are required to show up until...
Yes, sir. That's what PNZ is required.
Okay, thank you. One clarification. All right, and there are no more petition, petition and requests? Wrong, try that again. Yes. We get off track, but we're good. Hold on. Yeah, we're at petitions and requests.
You're now on petitions and requests, yes.
Or that. Go ahead. But, hold up. It's like, well, the real, you're next. Okay, now we're where we wanted to be, and I appreciate you guys coming in early, and I know the confusion when that happens, and it's like, here we go. So this is the time. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate your service to the community. I know it can be difficult and long nights on occasions, so I for one appreciate your service. I'm here with Barbara Coyle, who owns a light industrial facility here in Titusville that my niece was looking to lease for an indoor gym. Initially, we thought we'd apply for a conditional use permit, but that's not, that's not a permitted use under the city code. After talking with staff, it was recommended that we come here tonight, explain to you what the, what the goal and objective was, and then let staff kind of fill you in with... My understanding is that we're thinking about maybe adding a condition or a use to the light industrial for indoor gyms. I know a lot of CrossFit facilities, and the type of operation that my niece is running needs that, that kind of a facility that's sitting around empty, you know, quite honestly. So...
I'd like Peggy, if she's here, to speak on that for us.
Ms. Busaka. Because if you didn't say that, we were. Ms. Busaka.
The issue here is that indoor recreation is not permitted in industrial. We frequently tell people know who want to do gymnastics, CrossFit, in this case, I think there's a, it's a volleyball team, because they like the facilities that are in industrial, but our code doesn't allow it. And so I believe that what Mr. Ward is asking for is advisability to look at amending that portion of the code to allow those kind of indoor recreational facilities.
Member Jordan, you are in that area.
Well, I want to...
I'm more than...
Yeah.
With the location?
Where, yeah.
This, this particular one is up on Starlight, just opposite...
Silver Star Road.
I mean Silver Star. Silver Star Road.
And I'm really... No, you're not, but you're in an area like that. So do you see any issue?
I'm Barbara Coyle. My father built the building. Larkin Coyle, he was in construction, and he built the building, and I now am part owner in it, doing the property management on it, and it's kind of my business. But I want to put in a, something clean. I grew up with my father and watched enough greasy clothes. I want to put in a clean facility.
All right.
And, and I am an entrepreneur myself with a company that's 41 years old in Atlanta. And I would like to give this young, this... She's at a volleyball club for four years and seems to be doing real well in it, and she needs a place to practice and, you know, train young volleyball students using Titusville High School Gym. And so, you can speak to me if you want it, but to give her the opportunity to be successful, come into a facility that she uses when she needs to, most use, be something she can be proud of. And it is, it's a warehouse, it's concrete. Father built it very well and got high ceilings. Needs to... It's up on our road, which is across from the hospital.
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you for being willing to do that. And I can tell you, as an athletic director at Titusville High School, that it's going to get harder and harder to get gym time, basketball seasons started. So that's going to be a problem. Ms. Busaka, outside of being out of code, what do you see as a problem?
Well, actually, it, many communities allow this type of use in their warehouse. I know that the CrossFit that I went to twice before, so I'm very proud of the fact that I survived twice, was in a gym that was put into a commercial, an industrial area. I think it's very common. I think part of it's because the facilities not only are the right shape and size, but that the rents are probably pretty good to work with also. So I think that staff is very willing to consider this, bring back some options for you, and we can put an ordinance together and you can discuss it. Honestly, the only downside I see is I hate to give up industrial opportunities, but my theory on that is that if someone wanted to come in and do an industrial use, they probably could outbid the gym, and then the free market would take over.
Right, right. And clearly, my lean is to, if we have a building that is usable and it's got the proper height and it's got all the safety needed to be there, I'm going to be for that. And it's, for volleyball, for sure, but not just volleyball. I remember when I first became a council member about four years ago, actually, it was five years ago, but there was a wrestling program, North Pervard Wrestling, was looking for a building, any building. And I can tell you, that would have been a great building for them as well. We've got a building sitting there like that. I would hate to think a code would keep different people or different organizations out of it. And he's not in here right now, but Officer Willie Taylor, who wrestled for me and played football, he has the fighting edge, and he's always looking for another empty space. So if we've got an empty space, even not only this one, but if there are other empty space warehouse-type places where we can do some open, you know, not open gym, but, you know, basket, not basketball probably, but wrestling, volleyball, whatever we can do in there, instead of being empty, I'd like to give the advisability to do whatever we need to do to make that work. Member Jordan?
I, I really don't have a problem with this at all, and even in the industrial area that I'm in, I mean, we're pretty eclectic. We got all kinds of stuff out there. We got dirty stuff, got my business was pretty clean, made building boats. If there's open space or open facility and someone wants to use it, I see more power to it. So I really think we need to get advisability and try to loosen some of this stuff up. And I was just thinking of what was just said about us elderly people up here. We don't need to be crotchety about any of this stuff.
That's right.
We need to be open-minded and try to come up with different things to do, so I will...
I don't want to change the, you know, the...
Right.
The code or zoning or whatever. I just want to be able to...
And that's right.
And I have had a lot of calls on this building, a lot, a lot of calls. And there's... Well, no, I've had a lot of calls, but I don't, you know, I spent, you know, $30,000 just last year and cleaned it up and had it degreased and the walls painted and, you know, anyway, I did, you know, I just wanted to, and I would kind of like to see her succeed.
Very good. Member Stokoe?
Peggy, what uses are allowed in industrial right now?
Basically, the definition of light industrial is manufacturing without using raw materials. So they, you don't take the glass and make it into fiberglass, but you can take the fiberglass and make it into a boat. So that's the light industrial zoning category.
Okay. And from what you know with our code, why do you think that particular area is zoned industrial, or their intent behind that?
The dirt road.
It's, it's that, it's that very eclectic part of the world where there's a lot of heavy industrial, heavy, and heavy commercial. And then the residential, I don't know which came first, but it's a very eclectic part of the world.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm definitely interested in this project. Probably not changing it, the code from industrial, but seeing a CUP or...
Yeah, a CUP or even some sort of multiple use. It just doesn't make sense to me to have a building like that because of a code. Well, you can't go in.
Mr. Mayor? This will require code change.
Right.
There we go.
If you're interested in a conditional use permit, now's a good time to tell me because that, we typically advertise it as broadly as we can and still make it so somebody knows what we're doing. And there's a big difference between a CUP and a permitted use because a CUP will require that first the code is changed and then the CUP is approved. So that does lengthen the process for anyone waiting in the wings.
We can all do what we can do there. Member Robinson?
My concern is, as a person who's pretty active, is that, you know, when you're moving and putting something in a industrial area, quasi-industrial area, you got some, some, all depends on what is around it, if it's a paint, does it have all of the safety requirement? Is it ventilated appropriately? And all of those things have to be looked at before you can put some type of physical activity that is going on in that particular area.
And that would happen when the BTR came in because the building code would review that business tax receipt to make sure that the use is appropriate for the way that the building is constructed. If there were any additional exits required, if there were additional improvements necessary to the building, that would be required when the BTR comes in. We look at that. The fire department comes in and makes sure that it meets the fire code for the use intended.
Yeah, we got the air exchange is very...
Yes, sir.
Very important. Other than that, if we can get all of those signed up, then... Sweat?
Vice Mayor?
So Peggy, your advice. So if we ask for a CUP, we wouldn't need a CUP because of the business tax receipt. Is that what I'm hearing?
You got to get it as a permitted use first.
Well, what, what, what I said was, what I tried to say perhaps, was that there are different occupancy codes under the building code. And so the occupancy code is reviewed every time a BTR is issued to make sure that the building meets the requirements of the occupancy code. So if you change from an office to a gym, it would probably have a, may have a different occupancy code, which may have a different building requirement when it comes to lighting, ingress, egress, whatever it is. But we would review that, and that would be building-dependent. That wouldn't be a zoning issue. Now, in the case of people coming into a industrial area, what they teach you in zoning school is it's called coming to the nuisance. And if you want to come to the nuisance, the nuisance, it's not...
It's still there.
The nuisance is still there, and it's not the nuisance's fault. So if somebody feels like they want to be in an industrial area, then that is acceptable. When you go to the more intensive use, if the more intensive use moves to the less intensive use, now the concept of zoning is to protect that less intensive use. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
There would not be more than 30 people in time, and it's a 45 face.
Okay.
And I checked with... Boy, and she said, you know, it, you know, like for the occupancy or community problem, that they're going to practice there, they're not holding big meat.
I don't, I guess my question...
I know they're talking about citywide, but I'm just talking about me.
Can't we get something just simple to...
Let me just say this, as you can see, it doesn't take, you know, a whole lot to see that we really want to make this work. But we also have to do things to make it work. And it may be a CUP, maybe ordinance change first. And this reminds me of when we were working on the plant nursery, where we were all in favor of it, but we had some hoops to jump before we could make it happen. I think we're in that boat now. Nobody up here that I'm hearing is saying, "We don't want this." We want this, and not only just for the volleyball, I'm glad you kind of brought it to our attention. There's other, again, I had wrestling four years ago, and we really struggled to find them a place to go. I didn't even know about buildings like that, but if those are out there and we can use them, I don't want codes to keep us out if we can help it. So with that, Ms. Busaka's, um...
Could I make one?
Yeah, go ahead.
While we're saving on that, there's examples in the city of Titusville already where this has been a successful transition. Sculptor Charter School, which I'm a founding member of, that is out in the industrial park there. Extremely successful, fit right in, came to the nuisance, signed the waivers with the airport. It was a pretty big deal at the time. I would recommend that the direct staff to look closely at making it a permitted use as opposed to conditional use. The application for conditional use permits over $1,500, just to ask. That's sunk money whether you get it or you don't get it. If you're going to go in and you're going to go to the nuisance in a building, and the fire marshal and all those other folks are going to look at that particular use in that building, that'd be one less step that we'd have to go through just to get, if you make it a conditional use there. So what I'm saying is, a permitted use would probably be a smoother transition if that's something that we really want to support.
Ms. Busaka?
I agree that it's less time for the applicant. There's kind of a middle road, which probably is, perhaps what staff will recommend, is a limited use, which means that it's permitted if you meet certain limitations. And that doesn't require the extra public hearing.
And that's administrative process at that point?
Yes, yes, sir.
Perfect.
So that would, that gives some, that gives some limitations, but it does not require the extra public hearing.
And the most important thing for you is it doesn't require another public hearing, because those public hearings add up.
Well, and the timing, right now, we know we've got a two, three-month delay today.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Anything else? We good? No, I think we, they're hearing what we're saying, just like with the plant nursery, I think. You come back and say, "This is what we can do."
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much. We'll let them. They're just talking. All right, so just so you guys know, you don't have to stay and watch the rest of the meeting, because these sometimes go a long time. But anyway, thank you very much. Mr. Klein, I think you were next. You can watch this on TV, though, if you want to go home and do that. Bye-bye, guys. Hold it just a second, let them. All right, thank you, Mr. Klein, for your patience and waiting, and here we go.
You're welcome. I'm Bill Klein, 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I'm here to talk about the use of tree mitigation funds for the Titusville Gateway Project. When a city has 60% tree canopy in a healthy lagoon, word of mouth advertises that it is a tree city and gateway to nature. When a city reduces its canopy and dead manatees wash ashore from pollution, then the city will have to self-promote itself with signs declaring it's a tree city and gateway to nature. The Titusville Tree Mitigation Fund was started a long time ago. I can't find any written records on it. It was a restricted fund to be used to mitigate the damage done by the destruction of trees by developers. The restricted fund is reserved to, is a reserve account that contains money that can only be used for the specified purpose. Titusville had more than 40% tree canopy when the city council passed the tree mitigation fund as a restricted budget item to mitigate the environmental damage. City Council changed the tree mitigation fund on December 11, 2001, to a beautification fund for promoting more growth and more development. They ignored the original restrictions of planting trees. Titusville wrote a three-year contract after that with Kimley, Korn, and Associates to provide any engineering/architectural project up to $2 million, and any engineering services up to $200,000, so that they would not have to go out for competitive bids. Titusville City Council is now planning to use all of the tree mitigation funds to pay for the no-bid landscape, gateway, and signage project to promote future growth and not mitigate any damage that has been done. I have many questions which aren't necessary to answer now, but I think should be looked into. Does Titusville staff keep records on contracts, restricted funds, and completed projects? If these records are kept, then when citizens ask for information from Titusville staff, why do they say they cannot find any records? If these records are kept, when the citizens ask for information from the city attorney and city council members, why are they ignored and not answered? If, is the Kimley, Korn, and Associates contract an unethical use of tree mitigation funds? Is the Kimley, Korn, and Associates contract a violation of Florida laws and regulations? Why isn't the TEC consulted or asked to review projects that Titusville City Council authorized when tree mitigation funds are spent?
Need another minute, 30 seconds, or what?
Another minute should be okay.
I'll go with one minute. Can we get one minute? Go.
How does Titusville City Council justify using the originally restricted Titusville Tree Mitigation Funds to pay for the landscape, gateway, and signage project? Did the city ask the citizens if they wanted to change the tree mitigation fund from only planting trees to a fund that could be used to do almost anything, from pouring concrete to planting grass? Why doesn't the city increase tree canopy and reduce their pollution to the lagoon? I would like to see more emphasis done to mitigate the damage done by loss of trees than putting up signs and gateways. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I asked this question last time, but I keep hearing, especially you, Mr. Klein, have this concern about the no-bid contract. I'd like to hear a little bit about that, even though I think I heard about that at the last meeting, but, Mr. Klein, you weren't here and maybe didn't hear it. A simple question, we don't have such a thing as a no-bid contract?
Correct. You can't bid consultants. It's against the Florida statutes to bid a consultant by price. So the landscape architect services were put out in RFP with all of our engineering consultants. They were selected. There are actually two vendors put in for it. They were picked on qualification only. Then all their work orders come to you for approval if they're above $15,000. So no, they, they were not no-bid as they, and they do not provide construction services. They are simply a architect firm for the city. We have a number of them that do traffic engineering, water resource engineering. All of our supplemental consultants, they're covered by any engineering service or surveying are, or covered by CCNA of the Florida statutes.
So just to reiterate, there, there is no such thing within the city or within the state of a no-bid, one-bid contract? Basically, nobody gets to this, you know, what I'm saying is, you know, there has to be a bid process.
Yeah, yeah. Even if we go out for construction and we bid the process, and we have 60 people look at it, we may get one bid in a construction setting, and we may, we would come to you and say, "We only could get one bidder. Here's all the people that looked at it, but we got one bid." So in that setting, you could have one. In this case, there wasn't one. There are multiples. They were selected by a selection committee and brought before the council for that.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney, can you take us back? And again, we had this question two weeks ago concerning the beautification clause in the mitigation?
Yes, sir. I do not have the resolution in front of me. I had it at the last meeting.
Yes, you did.
Maybe 30, 2001. And that money has to be used to beautify publicly-owned land. So that's correct. The money would not be used for signage or things of that nature. It'd have to be used for the landscape and the beautification of publicly-owned land.
So when I, when there is a perception out there by some, and I think, Mr. Klein, you noted that, that we're using mitigation money for signage, that is not true?
I would defer to staff.
No, although this work order was landscape and signage, you recall the signage is funded by the general fund projects.
Okay, so it's not internal by the mitigation fund?
No, the same consultant, but they are funded by the general fund.
But the beautification part, not counting the signage, that can come from mitigation?
Yes, it's within the resolution to beautify public property. It's to be within a public right-of-way.
Okay. Those are two of the, three main things I think you wanted to hear. But the other thing that you said to me that I don't think I knew was that this, the mitigation ordinance, whatever we want to call it, was changed in 2001 to a beautification.
That is correct.
Yeah, and I don't know that's correct, and I, and I'm not going to put you guys on the spot to know what year it came in. But that makes a little sense to me that some of the concerns about mitigation, 2001 was long before I got here. So, but we can certainly keep talking and get to where we need to be. But I really think it's important that we realize that the bid process is, is fair, it's controlled, it's, it's the way it needs to be, the way you just explained it. And the beautification, if, does not use mitigation funds for signage, just for plants. Perhaps not the trees. And I'll go ahead and ask this last question. We always replace at least a certain percentage of trees with tree mitigation funding, correct? There's trees always involved in mitigation funding to some degree. Meaning, I don't know the percentage, but I would certainly...
We have put trees in, the Sandpoint Park project used mitigation funds. Some of the landscaping on the Splash Park, which were trees, where you, use of the landscape funds were for that, both public areas, public property, and beautification, yes.
And absolutely, I think we'd all say that's important. Member Jordan?
Yeah, just to clarify, Mr. Klein talked about the contract with the consultant. Those are IDIQ contracts?
Yeah, he, they responded to a request proposal for continuing services.
Okay. And that needs to be real clear, because when you have IDIQ, you don't know what you're going to get. You know, you got to wait for the customer to say, "I need you to do this next." But there's nothing wrong with that. The government uses it all the time. Matter of fact, anybody in, in, in business don't like to use it a lot, but it's out there. And that's what we use for this, because you just don't know what we're going to be asking them for. But they're under contract to do what, what we ask them to do. There's nothing untoward about it.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to point out, we talked about restricting some of the funds for trees only. But we had already talked about this project, and this was set in motion. So we felt like we needed to go ahead and finish this, and then go back and talk about what percentage of that funds is only for trees. So I don't know what happened in 2001. My memory doesn't go back that, that far, but going forward, that may be something that we're talking about.
Then if I reissue the questions I have specifically, can I get some answers? Because one of the questions I asked was, when did the fund change? And I had an answer that came stating the month that I gave you. I didn't know it at the time, because I didn't even live here. But this is what staff had told me in December 2001. When I asked for details of the original tree mitigation contract, they said they can't find any records. When I asked how much money was in the tree mitigation fund when it was transferred over, they couldn't tell me how much money was in the fund. When I asked how much money has been spent to plant trees, they couldn't tell me how much money was spent on trees. When I asked how many trees have been cut down, they couldn't tell me how many trees were cut down.
All right, let me stop you right there. Kevin, anything you want to answer on there? Where we find these answers?
Yeah, we found the resolution that changed the name. And in reviewing the budget books that came after it, there was not a revenue source that attached to it. So our speculation was it could have been a named fund in the code that never had a revenue source, and they changed the name. Again, this is my interpretation, because it was 20 years ago. But I can look at the budget book for the following year, which recognized all our revenues, and there wasn't a revenue coming to that restricted fund. So to me, that would say that fund didn't garner any tree mitigation that year. So I can't, you know, speculate as to what the code said before that date. But we do have the resolution. We do know what the funds were collected from that point forward, because that's a restricted fund that is tracked by finance. It's in the CAFR every year. It's in our budget books every year as an item. But the detail before 2001's a little difficult. It predates me being here. Been a long time, but not quite that long.
I know, I know I'm not going to and didn't hit all of your questions, but the main questions I think I'm trying to help with, with the bid and the mitigation and the beautif- and I learned something. 2001, 2001 turned it into beautification, I guess. And you can't use mitigation funds to buy signage. I think that's good. Member Jordan?
Yeah, I just want to also make it clear that before, two or three years ago, we didn't have much going on around here, and now we do. So this is a good problem to have. I'm glad you, you brought it up. But, you know, we've all agreed, we need to make sure we're attracting more people here. When people come into town, if someone comes to your front door, you want to make sure it's welcoming. I understand what your thoughts are, and I respect your thoughts, but I also have to respect the fact people up here. And we're in one accord that we want to do something with the entrance ways of this city. We certainly want to take care, I think you saw that we, we, we had a heart to save as many trees as possible with the tree thing. We got LID going on here. So I would just say, be patient. We're going to continue to do what we're doing. We're going to be positive with it, but we have a, a great chance to beautify the entrance way of Titusville, and we need to do that and finish it, because I think it was the council member who said that we finish what we start.
And as always, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one thing, that you will see the project again, because it will go through procurement for construction. What you've authorized is consultants to do a final plan and permitting through the state. You haven't authorized anything beyond that. So the next step will be, we'll go to a bid process, and we'll bring that, bring those bids back to you for award. So you'll see it again. You'll see a money value attached to those areas you already chosen, and you'll see the impact to our, our project that we have. I can't tell you, it'll be all the money, can't tell you it'll be half the money, because escalation of inflation right now, it's just, it's hard to estimate. But, but you will see this again. It will be a construction bid procurement, which would be a little bit award for a vendor likely pre-qualified DOT, because there's DOT right-of-ways. So you will see the monetary value of this project come back.
Okay, thank you. I think we're moving in the right direction. Any more petitions or requests?
Okay, we're back.
All right.
Okay, and, uh, it's the same handout that you have before, and it shows a number of facts that are showing that the city of Titusville has gotten into a lot of dishonesty and nonsense. And, and I showed you before about this, this sign that has to do with spraying the people. Now, another sign which is, which I want to say is in competition with, which is the worst thing, or one of the worst things, I mean, which, which is worse? The fraud or the spraying people with piss and poop? I don't know. What is it? What, what can be worse? In this case, the fraud is something that happened two and a half years ago, and it's $70,000. So I asked, I asked, for example, I asked city manager, says, "Where's the $70,000?" You know what his answer is? He doesn't answer. I asked, I asked, for example, "Mr. Jordan, Nelson, Stokel, where's the $70,000?" I have no answer. I asked, I asked the thing, uh, question is, "Where's the contract?" No answer. No answer. I asked, "Where, where, where is the report, the $70,000 report?" I asked the city attorney, city manager. They say they've given it to me, but it's on, I don't have it. Of course, the previous mayor said, "I received eight copies of it." I don't have one copy of it. So what we have is not, is humongous nonsense and dishonesty by our city manager, our city attorney, Sarah Stokel, Dr. Stokel, Nelson, Jordan. Not Jordan, not you guys. You, you, you weren't even here, Mr. Roberts. But anyhow, we have, we have tremendous nonsense and dishonesty that, that just, just like Bernie, Bernie Madoff, he's in, who is in prison, he's dead now. But he, he, he has asked questions. "I don't know. Why'd you do it?" "I don't know." So, so the thing is, is with this particular, particular fraud, the $70,000, no report, no contract, Geosintec denies it and so forth, is that, is that... GeoSynTech denies it and so forth, is that, is that, uh, what we have is, you guys, these guys can't take me to court, can you? How can you take me to court when, when you're guilty of, of this fraud? How can you do it? How can the city sue, sue Stan Johnston? When, when they, when they, when they made up all these stories? There's no contract, $70,000, can't find it, can't find the report, yet, and it's, and we got videos of it, videos of this, this, and so, so Dr. Stokel, I mean, I think we ought to- Thank you. More time. I see none, thank you. Any other petitions or requests? I see none, City Manager.
Onto a consent agenda item, can, council, are there any questions that you have of staff on any consent items? Council, is there any items that you'd like to pull? City Clerk, do you have any cards on the consent agenda?
Yes, one, one individual has signed it for six items.
And Mayor, and Council, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record-
Thank you.
For items A through C and E through G, remember that D has been, uh, tabled. Consent agenda item 8A, approve the award of the FY22 bulletproof vest grant. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the purchase of the police vehicles for FY22. Consent agenda item 8C, adopt resolution number 372021, advisability for right-of-way application number 2 dash 2021. Consent agenda item 8E, approve resolution 382021, approving temporary road closures of state roads for special events. Consent agenda item 8F, approve vehicle repair contract lease. And consent agenda item 8G, approve the storage lease with Titusville-Cocoa Airport Authority.
Very good. Uh, Council, nothing on those right now? All right, call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
And this is called Stay on Topic Night. It has to do with, uh, telling the truth, and you have, uh, my, uh, sheet that has photos, photos of, uh, of sewage spray, and spray on cars, and sewage going into the river and so forth, you have that, and you have a, an email that I sent to you, uh, yesterday that has 24, uh, uh, items expressing- Stop the clock, please. We're on consent agenda. Exactly. Well, say something about some letter. Uh, 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 okay, uh- So start calling letters and start talking about them. Well, I, I would, I wanted to say is that- Start the clock. Okay, thank you. Is that, is that this, this handout that I've given you has to do with all of the items on the, on, uh, the agenda, uh, because it has to do with what is going on in the city of Titusville. Now, uh, if you want me particularly, for example, like to add him, 8A? Yeah, there you go. All right, there we go, all right, let's, let's do that. 8A is I approve of that, 8B, approve of that, 8C, neutral, 8E, approve of that, 8F, neutral, and 8G, I approve of that also. And, um, uh, I was going to, I want to compliment the city this time on the, the organization of the consent order, the consent agenda items this time. I want to make a special, special, uh, uh, thank you for, for what you're doing, because it's much better than what before is, I want you to understand is that, is that we've had on our consent agenda items something which is, I think is unbelievable. We had a $10 million item on the consent agenda item, no discussion, nothing like that, nothing in our budget about it, $10 million, and, and it was put on the consent agenda by, by, with the guy that left, Mr. Stauffer, $10 million, and that was for the, uh, uh, it hasn't got to do with this, except what I'm saying is that this agenda id, series of agenda items is very different, and it looks much better. So I want to compliment you on this time, is your consent agenda items are, are more appropriate than what some of the consent agenda items that have been put before, like this particular $10 million items is, uh, upgrading our refuse, recycled water, the $10 million improvement fund, and that was, that's, that's, that's what I've expressed to you in, in the item number, uh, it's, it's in this, it's in this sheet right here about this, this, uh, this, the email that I sent you. So, um, I don't want to belabor it, but, uh, thank you for, uh, this particular series of agenda items that, uh, do not breach this horrible, uh, horrible part that, that the city has at times done, is that has, have breached their, uh, their, let's say, budgeting and so forth, just like recently, what we did recently was unbelievable what you did. In other words, well, that's a little bit off, is Mr. Stauffer went ahead, what he did was he, he, uh, uh, he did this 10-long virus, a four, four-long virus thing, he'd been planning two years and didn't tell you about, never did budget it, it's a half of a million dollar project, never budgeted for, you guys passed that, no, no discussion about that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Um, anybody, any other cards? I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approved, uh, consent agenda items 8E through 8C and 8E through 8G.
I have a motion from Member Jordan.
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor, roll call vote.
Member Jordan, Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously, City Manager.
Onto, uh, agenda item 9A, this will be the second reading of ordinance number 312021, City Attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 312021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations by amending the definition of social services contained in section 28-21, Indian River City Neighborhood Zoning, subsection C, non-conforming uses, providing severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their meeting on November 3rd, 2021, and recommended approval of the changes as presented by staff, the motion was 6-1. In addition, P&amp;Z made a motion to recommend City Council have advisability to staff review the remaining IRCN ordinance, section 2, uh, section 28-21, due to the discrimination of other uses. The city has received a claim, which is attached in your packet, and concurs that the restriction on social services, as defined particularly with regard to counseling services, may be interpreted and applied in such a way that certain treatment services would be prohibited contrary to the Americans with Disabilities Act, Rehabilitation Act, Rehabilitation Act, or other applicable federal or state regulations applicable to persons with disabilities. Accordingly, staff is recommending the terms be removed from the definition in section 2821 of the Indian River Neighborhood Zoning subsection for non-conforming uses. Ms. Bisaka is here to answer questions that you may have on this, the second reading and final-
I'm sorry, thank you. Member Robinson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did have a-
There you go. I knew it.
On the reading of this, uh, we, uh, this is, um, the second time we've looked at, at this, uh-
Yes, sir, this will be your second reading in the final public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
This will be your public hearing, yes, sir.
Okay, and, uh, we had looked at, uh, or, or what, uh, direction we've gotten from the state on this as well. Do we get, uh, that we have something that we can't limit-
This was not a comprehensive plan amendment, this is the ordinance, we haven't sent this to the state.
But, uh, what I'm saying is that, um, we want to authorize or change your conditional use to, uh, let someone have a, on a, a storefront or, or something out in the, um, to have circle services on Hopkins Street, is that correct?
I, I think we have managed to confuse you, we are on ordinance 9A as opposed to-
Social Services Revision.
You're on the wrong page, I think.
I'm on the wrong page?
Yes, sir.
Social Services Revision.
If it makes you feel any better, I've been on the wrong page a lot.
This is about counseling in the Indian River City area.
Right, this is the Indian River City ordinance where we were changing the definition of social services.
Okay, are you good? All right, Vice Mayor?
Um, this is actually a question from Mr. Broom. Uh, I did read the letter from the law firm, and it always worries me when they start citing cases, and I don't have access, and really don't want access to West Law anymore, but I'm assuming that you've looked at those cases and sort of evaluated what our chances would be in a lawsuit of this type.
Sure, sure, I, I've looked at the cases, um, and the point of the letter, and I can't say every case is exactly on point, or that I'm going to say that, you know, percentage of victory, I can tell you that the point in the letter that the Titusville Code, and I'll defer to staff a little, would prohibit the operation of, say, an outpatient substance abuse treatment facility, but would permit the operation of an outpatient medical office. So, it, this code could be applied in a way that would be discriminatory between those types of treatment services in violation of the ADA and people with disabilities, and that's our concern, and I do agree with that.
Yeah, so basically, it would behoove us to look in making sure that we are not on the wrong end of the lawsuit, and so my suggestion would be that we change it and not be on that wrong end.
Well, in reality, if I'm not mistaken, in my briefing, this is really how it came up, um, when we were basically having a lawsuit come against us in regards to offering the counseling services.
That's correct.
In Indian River City, yes. Uh, Member Robinson again.
Yes, and, and yes, I'm back to the point, it was the one that, uh, I was getting a little bit confused, uh, but, uh, and I agree with, uh, the Vice Mayor, is that if we, uh, we may get some kickback if we don't, uh, do go through this process correctly.
Costly, costly kickback.
Uh.
Costly kickback.
Correct, the city could have exposure, that's correct.
True, because it's, um, you know, it's, uh, that is, it's on, on Hopkins, and again, that, uh, it is not, you know, it's so many things, uh, you know, commercial places and, 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 and so forth that are there, and it is, uh, it's a totally different story if something is in the middle of, um, the housing areas and so forth, so we have to be very careful with that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hmm, and I, you know, we just, just have to take baby steps to make sure that we take consideration for the residents of Indian River City.
Absolutely.
Make sure, and we understand, uh, I, I know a lot of individuals that are a part of that, and, uh, we have to also protect the rights of, uh, a business person that is trying to start a business and do some good within our community.
Uh, yes, our, let's go ahead to the cards, call the cards, please.
Our Ward?
Our Ward, River Edge Drive, uh, you know, I feel your pain, I get it, however, uh, do they have doctors? May, uh, may I ask?
Sure, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Do they have doctors?
Well, this is an ordinance about everything, if you're asking about the specific issue that Mr. Finney, uh, they do have physicians.
So why didn't, if you had classified it as medical, we wouldn't even be here, that's an, uh, that's a permitted use.
When they ask for the BTR, that's what they ask for, then they ask for a zoning verification letter, and they gave us other information which talked about the counseling. When we said, "I'm sorry, counseling is not permitted", the law, the attorney wrote the letter. So we responded to the information they provided to us.
So, so there's no consideration for reclassifying them as medical?
We responded to the information they provided us, so they told us what they wanted their zoning verification letter for. We, we don't, we're not in the habit of telling people how to get around the code, we-
Good, that's a good thing.
We, we respond to the information provided to us, and that's what we did.
Ms. Ward's working that direction, though.
Well, I just want to remind you that I hope you'll, uh, take the easiest, uh, I mean, the obvious way that you have in front of you is, I guess, gonna have to be it, but it does start pulling the thread there on the sweater, and I want to remind you, because at the P&amp;Z meeting, um, none of, I didn't get the impression that any of the board members even knew what the Indian River City Neighborhood, Historic Neighborhood Plan was even about, and I don't feel that the staff that was there knew anything about it either, so unfortunately, because, I mean, I couldn't be there, and we couldn't get our people there to explain it, um, this is a, a plan that was seven years in the making, seven years, for the city and for the residents, uh, as Mr. Robinson will remember, and I'm hoping that after you solve this little problem, you will not reopen this to be pulled apart. Uh, the resident, the, the neighborhood had specific problems, um, and this plan was developed to solve those specific problems for the neighborhood, just like neighborhood plans do, that's what they're for. I mean, this is, I think, the third neighborhood plan the city has. You had River Edge Drive, you had Indian River City Historic District, may have a couple more, and you have, I believe you have a neighborhood plan for the west side of, uh, I think it includes South Street and Main Street. Maybe Peggy can respond to that later, but I don't want to see this looked at, pulled apart, fiddled with after seven years. Are we gonna have to deal with the fact that counseling is now not one of the, uh, uses that is non-conforming? Um, we just have to deal with it, I guess.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think, and I can't speak for them, I, I think I can, though, I think we understand the concern, um, and, and certainly not until we heard of the lawsuit and what was going on, and how we might not have much of a leg to stand on in that area, we're gonna have to make the best of what we can.
I, I get that, um, but I would hope that, uh, we investigate some language that could be, uh, take care of this problem, I mean, ADA protects people, um, that use some of the services that we're talking about here, but not all, so, okay.
I appreciate that, and I, I'm, I'm counting on staff to get the best wording and things we can do with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next card.
Ed Springer.
Ed Springer, Hopkins Avenue. Um, I'm here against this, because I have seven pages of things that were a draft back when we started this, and it, and every one of them it mentions, pet grooming services must be located on property that is adjacent to State Road 50, Hopkins Avenue, or Washington Avenue. Everything we went through in the plan was to keep the business, the businesses from coming in and buying up the houses and turning it into just another business area. I was a mailman in Merritt Island, and I saw it happen to a lot of areas where they just came in slowly and took it over, and it just left, and we have a, we're basically a historical neighborhood, is what we were fighting for. When we went through this, we were trying to keep residential and commercial separate. That's why these specifically say they have to be on Hopkins, US1, we allow Knox-McRae because they were already established, so it was to keep them out of the city itself. I, myself, wasn't against them coming in at the planning and zoning, they say something, it was a monopoly by the social services coming in, is why they made this rule. No, that wasn't the reason it was made, it was to limit the encroaching for the people of the neighborhood, to try to save our neighborhood, and we just asked that it should be IRC, Indian River City Neighborhood Commercial, is what we were going for, and Indian River City Neighborhood Residential, and that's what we are mainly fighting for, is the residential part of it. We understand, you can't fight commercials, you need commercial, you have to have that money and taxes coming into the city, we're all for that, but we just, we don't want you to change this wording with just this one wording. I feel that maybe if we just made that designation more specific in the ordinance, commercial or residential, it would solve that problem, because we're not against the businesses coming in here. not against the businesses coming in here, as long as they're a business and not just, we just had a lot of problem in the past with some of them. They would be treated for a little while, and then they would be dismissed to wander the neighborhood until they could get their final paycheck or whatever they had. And they were bothering people in the neighborhood, stealing stuff and everything like that. And it's, it's been nice this last six, seven years. We haven't started up a little bit every now and then. We get some kids coming through. Anybody does, you know. It just happens. But not when you know exactly where they're coming from. And that's what we were trying to stop. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. And I can't say enough, I get what you're saying. I think we get what you're saying. It's a concern. And I think that Ms. Ward kind of said it. And that is, you know, we are where we are, and we got to deal with it. And again, I would lean on staff to make it the best possible change that we can. But it's going to be, it's not going to be everything you want. That's for sure. And I get that. Member Stokoe.
Question for Peggy regarding the zoning. So do we have just residential and commercial zoning there? Or what is this Indian River City neighborhood zoning?
The Indian River City neighborhood is designated, it's kind of looks like a donut, as I described. It has a nice residential center, and then the areas on the north, south, east, and west border are all commercial. The, as I described last week, when the plan was written upon which the zoning was based, it said the recommendation was any further expansion of new and existing service agencies into the neighborhood would tip the balance of land uses, and that the city should consider a stopping point to prevent an unhealthy concentration of social services in the neighborhood. The, so the final recommendation on page 23 of the report is to prohibit the introduction of new social services and the expansion of existing social services in the neighborhood, in parentheses, encompassing the entire boundaries of the plan, which was both the residential and the commercial sections. And then it goes on to describe the definition of social services, which is what's shown in the code. So the current ordinance reflects the adopted plan recommendation.
So is social services considered appropriate for the commercial zoning?
Right now, no, because it's considered a nonconforming use that can't expand. And the social services are as defined in the ordinance. Now, if someone were to come into the residential, as I described at the last meeting, if you try to do a commercial use in residential, we're going to deny that unless, as I told you, the state has preempted the ability for home-based businesses. So if someone comes in and says, I want to do counseling of whatever level at, in a home-based business, the state has preempted our ability to tell them no. But if someone were to come in and say, I want to open up my Master of Social Work in Counseling in a residential home, and they weren't calling it a home-based business, then we would say that's not permitted. But that would be strictly because we don't allow commercial uses in residential. In this case, social services are specifically prohibited in the entire district.
So outside of this district, is social services considered commercial if it was somewhere else in the city?
It would be a professional office. And yes, it could be permitted in a number of zoning categories that way, much like an insurance office. You would have people in the office, and they could, they could do counseling. I know people that do counseling over the internet and never have an individual in their home or their office. But we, based on this code, cannot issue a BTR.
Because it's under the nonconforming?
Correct.
If that clause wasn't in there, it would normally be allowed.
Would normally be allowed in the, in the commercial section.
Okay. I'm just, I see your point. I'm just trying to see the best way to plan, because I know a little bit about that history of that area. I will say, I appreciate the only change that they're making is just the strike through of the counseling, which to what Laura Ward was saying, I don't see us needing to kind of dive into it any more than that. But maybe having further conversations to, I want to make sure that neighborhood's protected.
Can I say something? One of the problems we had was the letter that we were given from the attorney, so that their business would not be prescribing any medicine at this location. But on their business plan, it says, this is our business plan. We dispense medication for people that are going through withdrawals or something like that, or things like that. And that's, we were, if they've, they've come in there, social services, they've gotten their medicine, now they've released them, and they're wandering around our neighborhood again looking for something cute. And that's what our big concern is. We just don't want them being turned loose. I mean, I don't know what their counseling plans are, if it's a walk off the street. But we were just concerned about the giving them drugs and then turning them loose on a Main Street. Hopkins is pretty busy, and I live on Hopkins. And it's become a great race place. You hit that first corner, there where the storage facility is, because it has the turning lane. Well, it makes it perfect for passing. And I can hear those engines crank up coming down by my house.
Hold up there. Do we have anything we want to say concerning what the difference between the letter and then the program?
Sure. They, they, an applicant came in and they provided us information to get a BTR. And that information said that they were going to, let me get the application in front of me. The application was for outpatient substance abuse treatment and group therapy. So the app, so the staff called and said, what are you doing? And they said, we have physicians. This is a physician's office. So the staff issued the BTR as a professional. Then the next person who came in provided us information that stated that they were going to do, no medications are dispensed or administered in our offices. So when we wrote the letter, the, thank you, zoning verification letter, they said, we said, we're sorry, this is counseling, because they told us that there was no, they didn't say there was physicians. They simply said that they were doing outpatient substance abuse treatment. That fell into counseling. We had to deny it. And my understanding is that they need the zoning verification letter in order for them to get their state license. So they are awaiting that. But if this were a physician, then if, now, let me tell you this. If it's a physician that we think is doing counseling, we would say no. So a psychiatrist would be a very difficult thing, because we wouldn't quite know what to do. A physician that's a podiatrist that we don't think is doing any specific counseling, we would provide that. This ordinance has been very difficult because of the broad language, and people give us all kinds of information.
It also sounds very difficult to verify.
It is. And we, we do our best. We ask for state licenses. In this case, they didn't have one because they're waiting for the zoning verification. We call them and ask what they're doing. And the different people give us different information, depending on who you talk to at the firm.
And we move forward in the direction we feel we, that is fit, that we need to do. And things don't go the way we thought they were going to go. Can we readdress it?
You can always amend the ordinance. Absolutely.
As if they're not doing, or if they're, you know, giving out the medications or whatever they say they're not going to do, and they end up doing it. And we, I would like to, you know, like you said, it sounds like we can come back and, and deal with that, or no?
If you're ju, under this code, if you are just a physician, then you can come in. It's the social, it's the counseling and the other uses that are described here that you can't do. You can't provide counseling, food provision, emergency, or short-term housing, and employment services. So we, in one case, we had, the state wanted to come in and see if they could have employment services. And we said, no, we're sorry, you can't locate there, because it says very specifically, no employment services. So we do this on a case-by-case basis, based on the information we're providing.
That's really all you can do. So I appreciate that. Member Robinson.
Yeah, I, I, as Lauren said, I was involved with a lot of this years ago. And with the new laws, state laws that are coming out with home-based businesses, it is going to run into direct conflict with some of the things that the, the family of Indian River City wants to preserve, because you're going to have some of those things right in the middle of the community with the, with the requirements for home-based business that you cannot stop by law. And that's one of the things that has, truly has to be looked at as we move forward. If they have made those kind of decisions based on home-based business, it's going to be difficult for us to move too far to the left or too far to the right in this particular process.
As a home-based business, do they live there and then work out of their home? Is that what that means? Okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to verify that. I thought that's what it meant. I just, I wanted to make sure they weren't just had their business at this home, and then they went and lived over to someplace else.
Right. That's, that's, that's the way things are going. And it's going to be some, you're going, I would suggest that the, the family of the Indian River City community is, sit down and talk and, and kind of look off into the, the future and see what, you know, what you can preserve and what you cannot.
That's why we were looking at being able to just change that from residential to not being, you know, in the commercial. I think that would be the easiest fix.
You need to look at that so that you can come back with some.
Maybe looking at.
All right, hold up. Don't go yet. I was going to let you go.
No, I'm, my thought was, as hard as it is to try to figure out what fits under this ordinance and what doesn't, maybe we need to look at the ordinance and provide advisability for staff to look at it and see if we can tweak it and make it a little bit better.
I would disagree with that. But it seems to me this is very title-sensitive.
Well, you breathe.
Right. That could be a separate action. I'd take action on this.
We can take action and do the, get an advisability.
If council has a separate motion, what's to do?
Uh, Member Jordan.
I'm not going to be for that. I'm going to tell you what, I'm not going to be, you're opening up a can of worms here. And I think I heard someone say, don't screw around with this thing, because you're going to end up, it took seven years to come up with this thing, and now we're going to look at it? I know I won't be around to be looking at this thing for sure. But I, I think the reason, the whole reason why we're even looking at this is because of the possibility that there were some ADA guidelines that we were going against. And looking at the other exclusion on here, I don't see any ADA problems with those, correct? Peggy, why are you looking at me like?
I'm not an ADA expert, honestly. Use, honestly, I'm not.
Haven't evaluated it completely for that. The language being broad, I mean, we'd have to look at that. And if we do see that, we will bring that back to you. You know, the employment services, what does that mean? You know, some of those.
Then I'd like to do one thing at a time and deal with this. And then when you come back, then decide if we want to go forward with the advisement.
I'm with that. Yeah. Okay.
So again, let's not get it too cluttered. This already kind of caught us by surprise. I mean, this is not something we expected to be doing right now.
All right.
So anyway, thank you very much. And I get it. Any other cards?
One more. Stan Johnston.
Took my breath away. I gotta hold on. All right. And any more cards? No more cards? All right. Then I would be looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, and Council, I move that we approve ordinance number 31, 2021, relating to social services in Indian River City Neighborhood Zoning District.
I have a motion from Member Jordan. I have a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Ward, you all do realize that we, we had some concerns, and we get where you're coming from. And I trust staff is, is on top of the best we can do. Thank you so much. City Manager.
We are on to Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA 2-2021, Property Rights Element. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 32, 2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the Comprehensive Plan of the city of Titusville by adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2, 2021, adding a property rights element, including goals, objectives, and policies relating to property rights into the comprehensive plan, providing for separability, providing for an effective date.
This is the public hearing for ordinance number 32, 2021. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, considered this plan amendment on October 20th, 2021, and unanimously voted 7-0 for approval. Statutory provisions in Chapter 163 of Florida statutes relating to comprehensive plans were amended to require each local government to adopt a property rights element into their comprehensive plan. Inclusive of property rights element is intended to protect private property rights and to ensure that they are considered in local city decision-making process. Mr. Bisac is here to answer any questions that you may have on this one.
Anything you want to open with or no? Counsel? Uh, Member Robinson?
Yeah, this is somewhat, it's, thank you. It's somewhat related to, you know, what we can do on our property and what we cannot do on our property. And if you look at it in a lot of ways, that was some of the things that were just discussed before can be influenced. I guess that's a good word for the influence by, by this. I don't think that, that it's not, it's coming down from the state. We have to incorporate it in there. And as I looked over it, it's just one of those things that we do and that we have to do as we move forward.
I see no other counsel. We have cards on this?
Yes. Brent Swanson?
Good evening, counsel. I want to say thank you for your time and introduce myself. My name is Brent Swanson, 25-year-plus Titusville resident. And this small project that we're doing here conforms to this.
Okay, okay. I think you're, you're.
Talk to you later.
I'll see you in a minute.
Don't worry about it. I had the same problem as well.
Good timing. Good timing. You see, there's a reason for that. All right, let's try that again. Do we have any cards on this one?
This is 9B, correct? Okay, which one?
Easy dog, not buffalo.
Okay. Stan Johnston.
Stan?
Only card.
Okay, so we got one card on this one.
I've submitted to you this four-page email. And number six, number eight, number 18, number 19, number 20 have to do with this, and in some way, number 22. So it's, there's, it's relevant to a number of, of problems. In other words, the damages to the city, you know, damages to the community by the city by violating laws. For example, number eight, I read to you number eight. That is, that has to do with Mr. Diesel's mother-in-law. I believe it does. Yeah. No, it doesn't. It's, that's number, that's number six. But number eight is 1980 to present, no photo, over 40 years, city's policy to ignore laws and to force future flooding by no maintenance of floodways located outside of city limits as required by, and this is the area from State Road 50 to Fox Lake Road going to St. John's. Number one, city stormwater master plan, violates city stormwater master plan. In other words, this, this is a violation of, of what, what the city should be doing. They're violating their own laws. It's a horrible thing what the city's doing. Number two is FEMA, violating FEMA requirements. Just do it. The city just violates, just does it. Number three is, uh, common sense and logic, the water flows downhill. So city conceals these facts from the public, state, FDEP, FEMA, and others such, I'm reading this directly from, and others, others, such as in city's deliberately false 2019 report resilient Titusville, co-authored by Brad Parish, Eddie Galendo, EC, East Coast Central, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, et cetera, that part of city is susceptible to flooding by the outrageous ignorance and arrogance of council staff hiding the facts of unmaintained floodways to the St. John's River located between Fox Lake Road and State Road 50. This is a plan to flood. Now, it's nonsense and so forth. So the city is violating its own laws. And the thing is, when I go to the city and say, listen, how do I get the city to? how do I get the city to, um, to enforce its own laws? Well, I can't complain to the city because the city won't, the city will not enforce its own laws upon itself. I can't go to the courts for certain, certain reasons. So I don't know how in the world to enforce the city to obey its own laws. In other words, for example, this is what we're talking about, these, these particular items in this, in this agenda item. In other words, the rights to the citizens. I can't get them. I can't get the city to obey its own laws.
Perfect timing.
Okay, I'm asking for more time.
I would. I see none, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Problem.
Any other cards? All right, then we move forward with that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve comprehensive plan CPA two dash twenty-one, property rights element.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, motion passes unanimously.
Onto nine C, which is a quasi-judicial matter. So the city attorney will read the quasi-judicial procedures.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. Staff and applicant, of all witnesses that intend to speak, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, of all agenda items, been property advertised. In the event that a council member has received any ex parte communications, either verbal or written, outside of the hearing, council members shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communications must be disclosed and made a part of the record. In the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed. Thank you.
No, I, any council members having anything they need to disclose? I do not.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the placement of a hundred and ninety-nine-foot AGL monopole communications tower and support facility to be located at fifteen Engling Avenue. The property is zoned light industrial services and warehouse M-one per section twenty-eight-two-twenty of the city's land development regulations. The placement of a transmission tower requires review and approval through a CUP. The applicant additionally has submitted a variance request to the Board of Adjustment Appeals, which will be heard on December second, twenty-two-one. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this item on November third, twenty-two-one, and recommended approval with the following four conditions. Number one, provide a five-foot landscape yard buffer in front of the proposed high-security fence where the property fronts England Avenue. Second, meet all required LDRs. Third, approve, uh, approval of the site development permit shall not increase any non-conformities or create any new non-conformity issues. And four, the cell tower has to be full head monopole. Motion pass six-one. Ms. Busaka is here to answer any questions that you have.
I have a very brief presentation.
Please.
I think should be coming up. Maybe not. Oh, here we go. Just wanted to show you where, this is a very small property just south of Garden Street. And the conditional use permit would allow a tower on this property. There is already an, a small existing home on the property. But it's not, it hasn't been used for several years. And the last BTR was for a building contractor company, which expired in twenty-fifteen. The tower, and I know that the applicant will go into this in more detail, so I'll, um, allow her to do that. But the tower, it is intended to look like the picture that you see on the left side there with, and there's a summary of proposed conditions. The staff recommends a minimum of a five-foot landscape buffer. And I need to explain that, uh, briefly. The, there is not much room on this site. And the high-security fence that is likely to be put up here that the applicant has told us they wanted, requires a ten-foot landscape buffer. The applicant has requested that they have a, that they get a variance to reduce that buffer. Staff would like to see some minimal amount of landscaping to protect the, just the Enig side because the other sides are surrounded by commercial and industrial. And so we would like to say that they, if, if council agrees with that to some extent, whether it's five feet or less, that if you put a condition on here saying that there must be some, this, some amount of landscaping, then the Board of Adjustment and Appeals cannot waive that. So this is, this, if you do not agree with that, then it's the board entirely within the decision of the board in Adjustment and Appeals, how much of, or any landscape buffer that's required. The other item that I wanted to bring to your attention is that because the, this area, this may visually impact the historic board, the, they were required to go through a historic, um, review by, and the city's historic preservation officer determined that there was no impact visually to the historic downtown. However, the historic board made a recommendation that the tower be painted a sky blue to make it blend into the sky and that the antenna configuration on the tower be a flush mount. I know that the applicant can explain that better than I can. But upon review, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not further either of these recommendations to you. And that is the presentation that I have, except to say that the staff has reviewed this for consistency with the comprehensive plan and has found that it meets the locational criteria. We do not expect to see any adopted level of service impacted, nor do we expect to see any changes to the exterior lighting or signage on the site. The addition of the monopole may indeed change the intensity of the current use, which, as I said, is a small vacant house. So we would expect to see more in, intensity and that our only recommendation relates to that screening.
And the perennial question, perpetual question, the one vote against, what was that about?
I watched that, the video, and the individual did not express why he said no.
All right, just so, um, you guys know in the back, the first thing I'm going to do is go applicant. After applicant, we call cards, then go counsel, and then applicant rebuts. So play that however you want to play it. I think that's going to be applicant. All right, so we're calling the applicant first. Here we go. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Matt Snaya-John, nine thirty-five Main Street, Suite D-one, Safety Harbor, Florida, three-four-six-nine-five. As you heard, I and my, um, RF engineer Craig O'Neil with T-Mobile have both provided speakers cards with oaths. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I would like to pull up at this time. As you heard, I come before you today with staff and planning and zoning recommendations of approval for a conditional use to allow a hundred and ninety-nine-foot-tall monopole-style transmission tower at fifteen Enig Avenue. And you heard the parent parcel is, uh, industrial-zoned and has a house that was most recently BTR'd as a, um, small office. I'm showing you an aerial, uh, of the vicinity around the monopole. And the, this aerial up is north. The green marker is the monopole. And you can see the street grid of Titusville extending out from it. And here's an arrow to orient you to the site. This is a closer aerial. Um, so to the north is commercial property and then Garden Street. Again, up is north in this aerial and the green marker is the monopole. To the south is M-two heavy industrial. To the east are I-one light industrial, M-two heavy industrial, that's the old concrete plant, and then the FEC mainline. To the west are Enig Avenue, uh, then light industrial and mixed uses. The area is generally developed with industrial uses, uh, office and commercial uses along Garden Street. There is one residential zone property that exists as a standalone spot off to the northwest. Uh, one of the things that you can see at this elevation is that there is urban canopy in the area that extends out. So as you go north of Garden, you can see there's urban canopy, um, more prevalent up that way. And as you extend out, and this helps break up view sheds and help limit the monopole's visibility. The parent parcel is zoned M-one with a future land use designation of M-use, uh, mixed use. And you heard that communication towers are allowable for the conditional use process. This is just a closer aerial, again, showing, uh, the area. And you can see that there is, uh, urban canopy as you surround. And this is your zoning map. And then this is your future land use map. Again, in all these maps, up is north. The yellow arrow is pointing to the subject parcel. I'm now showing you a picture of a communication tower. Uh, this is a, when I say, discuss a monopole-style communication tower, um, it is a style of communication tower that looks like what you see here, which has a single support pole with no, with external antennas mounted on a head frame, uh, but no guy wires or ironworks extending out from that. And this minimizes the overall visual profile. This particular monopole will be completely dark at night. The monopole will be located near the center of the lot. I'm now showing you sheet C-one. This maximizes separations in all directions. Uh, this lot's a little bit tricky in that it predates your, um, land development code. So it is unable to meet the setbacks for the zoning district for whatever you build on it. And there is, there are, um, are companion variances that will come back before you, uh, to, uh, address setbacks and the like. One thing that you'll notice on this plan sheet is that there is a dashed circle. And that is a fall zone radius. So this monopole will be designed with a twenty-three-foot fall zone radius. So in the unlikely event of structural failure, it has a pre-engineered ramp point where the monopole folds over upon itself and stays completely contained within the parent parcel. Uh, this is proven technology. It's been used, uh, for interstate lamp posts for quite some time. And the vast majority of the towers that I have zoned over the years employ this technology. You also have a signed and sealed fall zone letter that was in, for, uh, committing to the fall zone radius. That was included in the original submittal folder. The monopole will host T-Mobile's antennas and will be able to support antennas for up to three additional colocations for a total of four users. Here's the elevation. You can see T-Mobile's, uh, this is from sheet C-two of the plans that you have on file. You can see T-Mobile's, um, equipment pad on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, you can see the elevation sheet. That one does show three colocation spaces. Um, what's happened since the time that this tower was in its initial planning is that DISH has come forward, um, with an FCC mandate as the fourth carrier. Uh, the FCC wants to have four carriers nationwide. So the tower industry was, for a short while, shifted to a point of having three carriers. And now it's shifting back to where they're designing to be able to co-locate all four. So that would explain that discrepancy. All right, I'm going to run you through photo simulations. The first simulation is from, uh, Garnet Avenue looking to the southeast. You can see the monopole in the distance. And you can see, um, in the background, the existing, uh, urban canopy is able to buffer everything except for the very top of it. And you can see the trees in the mid-ground, such as that oak off to the left, would be able to fully buffer the monopole. This is Garden Street at Maiden Lane, looking east. And you can see at this distance, from your, um, bulk width perspective, you're looking at something that's more like a utility structure. And you can see that the base of the monopole is completely buffered, um, and objects in the mid, in the mid-ground, such as that tree off to the right, would be able to buffer a half to two-thirds of the monopole. Sem three is from Titus Street, looking south. You can see at this distance, the base of the monopole is fully buffered. Um, you can see that vegetation in the background, such as the palmetto off to the right, would be able to buffer half of the monopole. And you can also see it's starting to scale down towards objects that are in the view shed, such as the power pole that is off to the right. Also see the trees off to the left would be able to buffer a greater percentage of the monopole. This is simulation four, from Cannaveral Avenue, looking north. And you can see at this distance, uh, the base of the monopole is buffered. And even short vegetation, such as that cabbage palm off to the right, would be able to buffer at least half of the monopole. And then this is sim five, uh, from Garden Street, looking west. You can see at this distance, this has, this does have the greatest visibility for the monopole. But again, from a scale and bulk perspective, it's starting to scale down into objects that you would see in the view shed, such as that lamp post off to the left. Moving into RF need. The monopole serves two functions. First, it's to replace coverage from a city water tank, um, that has been decommissioned and you are planning to demolish in the near future. Cur, last year, I came before you to request approval of something called a cell on wheels, or a cow, as the industry would call it, on Delayon Boulevard. And that's currently triaging the situation, uh, with continuity coverage. So basically, you have three small antennas that are providing some level of service right now to keep coverage going at a minimum basis. The long-term plan, as you heard before you last December, is that this does need to be replaced with a permanent installation. So the monopole restore coverage. It will also offload capacity stream from neighboring towers. So just like how you deal with concurrency issues with things like streets, uh, the cellular industry deals with a concurrency issue with their towers. Um, a tower is like a road. It can only handle so much traffic. Uh, they upgrade those as much as they can to handle as much traffic as possible. But you do reach a point where you need to add a new one. Especially, that is especially true in a situation like this where we're not really adding a new tower to the city. We're re-establishing an existing installation that, um, has gone offline. All right, and these are all, um, the RF package that you have in your file. So this is the current coverage. Um, I'm not showing the cow here because that will go away. So this is the coverage without the cow, just with their current network. And you can see that, um, in this map, up is north. And you can see the street grid of Titusville, um, off to the right, which is the east. And you can see three green spots. Those are existing reliable indoor coverage, which is the type of coverage that you need for an urban environment. That's where people use their communicate, use their phones and other cellular devices. You can also see yellow, that is coverage that could be reliable in vehicle, but is not reliable in building. So you can see that the area that is, and I'm afraid I do not have a laser pointer and I will eventually learn to remember that with this, um, remote. But anyways, um, you can see that the area on the north in a Titusville has unreliable coverage. You can also see that T-Mobile has pre-existing, um, communication towers to the north, northwest. There's a red dot up towards the top of that map that centers in the green area. Off to the west, um, at the interstate, and down to the south, southwest. Uh, the only existing tower in the area that could theoretically support T-Mobile's antennas is an FPL tower that's over fifteen-hundred feet to the southwest. And in between the cow being approved and coming to you with this application, they did look into co-locating on that FPL tower. Unfortunately, they were unable to co-locate. It was not available. All right. Here is the proposed coverage, uh, from the monopole. And as you can see, the northern end of Titusville has reliable coverage throughout its primary street grid. The height of the monopole is driven by the coverage area and changes in elevation. So for example, the cow that you approved was a hundred and two feet tall. And that's technically shorter than the water tank that's coming down by thirty feet. So if you were to create, if you were to approve a tower that is the exact same height as the water tank, accounting for rain changes and everything, it would need to be a hundred and thirty-two feet. And that's before you account for the shift to the east in coverage, which changes the way that they hand off, the towers hand off to their neighbors, especially to that western tower. Moving on to housekeeping, uh, we have provided in the record an FAA determination of no hazard to air navigation. And your airport authority reviewed the monopole and approved it. So this monopole will be completely dark at night. It will not have any lighting on it. Your historic preservation board recommended approval of the monopole to conditions, um, to paint the monopole sky blue and to use flush mount antennas. Your Planning and Zoning Commission declined to fall, to further those, uh, conditions of approval. And, uh, And it really comes down to, when you're looking at, starting with the sky blue paint, you can match wonderfully with one particular sky, but then you can, then you mismatch with other skies. A dull gray monopole has the ability to match to a greater degree with a greater number of skies. And if you think about it, it's kind of common sense. The Air Force and the Navy use gray paint on their jets instead of painting them blue. And this is the city of Bonita Springs, you can see that there's a mismatch there. If you do choose to pick up the historic preservation board's condition of approval, we would ask that you instruct staff to specify a specific paint color of sky blue, since sky blue is a variety of shades, and we would like to not have to play Groundhog Day with a paint crew that has to go climb the tower. Flush mount antennas. So the other recommendation of approval that your planning zoning board did not, or declined to follow was the flush mount design. And that's what you see on the left, that's where your antennas are paired up and mounted to crossbars that are strapped directly to the side of the monopole. And it does create a thinner profile, but what it does is it stretches the antennas further down on the monopole, so area that would just be clean support pole becomes covered with equipment. Mr. O'Neill, who is available here if you'd like to hear it from him, also testified that since the antennas, you would have to take and put two antennas on your top level, and then your third antenna per side goes down on your lower level, that lower level ends up losing some of its coverage. So two of the antennas maintain the coverage that you see in that map, one loses, one loses some of that coverage. The other thing that I presented to your planning zoning commission is that you additionally have to strap all of the support equipment, so radios and supporting computer equipment that goes normally behind the antennas on the head frame mount, directly to the side of the monopole. So that means that when they have technicians go out there and they have to service the top end of the monopole, they can no longer just climb it and then do their work. You have to actually bring a crane out and lift them up in a basket. I believe the colloquialism for crane operators is meat on a hook, but you close down part of ENIG, so you set up your Mott, and then you put the crane out there and lift them up. And we did respectfully submit that if you were to go that route, it would be more burdensome on your street grid, and it would make maintenance more burdensome in general. So that is the logic for why those two conditions were declined by your planning and zoning You heard the conditions that your planning and zoning commission did apply to the monopole. We agree with all of those, and we adopt those into our application by reference, and we would ask you to include them in your approving resolution. I know that you have members of the public that would like to speak. I know that we have a long, we've had a bit of a long evening. I will try to move through the conditional use elements very quickly. I would normally just skip them out of deference to time, but I do want to at least get them in place. On compliance with the comprehensive plan, the monopole is located in industrial zoning, which is where you would expect to see a use like this surrounded by higher and higher intensity uses. Your LDC is the implementation of your comprehensive plan, and with exception of the variances that stem from the non-conforming nature of the lot that would apply to any use that you would see put on that lot, the monopole meets the requirements of your land development code. Ingress egress, the monopole will create one trip per carrier per month, and it will use an existing access point. So there'll be a de-minimous traffic impact using an existing access point. Nuisant factors, you heard the monopole will be unlighted. Any backup generators that are located in the compound will be compliant with Titusville noise ordinance and also with EPA emission regulations. You heard that this is unstaffed, it requires one trip per carrier per month. T-Mobile is prohibited from creating electromagnetic interference, otherwise the FCC, the FCC gets on their case, and they could lose their license shirt or be punished by the FCC. So will not create electromagnetic interference, and therefore we respectfully submit that it will not generate traffic, lights, noise, odor, smoke, glare, or electromagnetic interference. And the dull gray, the gray finish that would be on the monopole if you choose to go that route will be dull gray. Adopted levels of service, this is an unstaffed facility, so it will not affect your concurrency, and you heard that there's de-minimous traffic. Screening, this is in the center of your parcel, so it does maximize separation. It does take advantage of existing urban canopy, and we will provide the five-foot wide landscape buffer that staff has requested. Proposed signs and exterior lighting, there'll be no signs on the monopole except for FCC safety placarding, and this will be completely dark at night, you heard that as well. Hours of operation, this will be unstaffed, so there'll be no hours of operation to the public. It will provide coverage to the area 24/7/365, and that's important when you consider the fact that communication towers through state and federal law have to provide E911 locationing services, and when you have 80% of 911 calls in many jurisdictions coming from cellular phones, it provides an essential public service. It's not a luxury, it's a necessity. Off-street parking, there's one technician parking space, required yards and open space. This will come back before you with the companion variance, and we will provide the five-foot wide landscape buffer that staff is requesting. General compatibility, the height is minimum to restore coverage. It'll be completely dark at night, it'll have the dull gray finish near the center of the parcel. It's in an industrial area where you, where you would expect such a use. It makes, it takes advantage of urban canopy in the area. Scale of the neighborhood, again, the size of this monopole is minimized, and the profile itself through the monopole design is minimized. It doesn't expand out like a guy tower, or more importantly, a lattice tower, which would create a triangular look. And then special district requirements, with the exception of those variances that would apply to any use put on this land, we meet all the requirements of the M1 zoning district. So with that, T-Mobile respectfully requests the city council grant approval of the monopole as depicted in the staff report and the application, including staff and planning and zoning, planning and zoning commission conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. I and Mr. O'Neill are available for any questions that you may have.
Member Robinson?
Yes, I think my question was answered, but I did not see, you know, that five feet of, but because I, I was looking at all of the pictures as close as I possibly could on my computer here, and I, you know, it's hard to see if it's close to Garden Street or close to Cannaveral Street, you know, and you defined all that, but I guess you were willing to comply with what staff is requesting, and that kind of cleared my question.
Thank you, board member.
Member Stokel.
Yes. That was very thorough, so I appreciate that, because I had already written down some questions, I'm like, ooh, this is, thank you. Question for Peggy. Do all cell towers that are coming in city limits, do they all have to go through a CUP process?
They do.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, and then I think you kind of touched on this as well in your presentation. Why did you pick this particular site? It's because I know you still have to go through those variances and whatnot. Why was this like the best site given even those certain criteria, I guess?
So going, Matt and I, John, again, it's actually in your, your city records that we held a pre-application for a site that was down at the end of the street that had, at the end of ENIG on the southern end, that was a Spectrum property. They had satellite dishes there, they had an existing tower that was much shorter, and the thought process was to replace that tower with the monopole. Unfortunately, Spectrum declined to, they, they had a lease and they backed away from it. I don't know if they have other plans for the property for their own proprietary cable uses or not, but we did try to find, we did try to find other sites, and we did reach the point where we actually presented another site to your staff for their insights and expectations in the conditional use process.
Okay, so just given what you guys need, this is, this is the best site that you would find, given that it still would need to go through the variance process, correct?
Yes, board member. And when, the, the other thing is that communication towers aren't like radio stations or the like. So for example, I grew up, for part of my childhood, in Old East 106, an AM/FM radio station in Sarasota County. And from City Island in Sarasota, it could reach as far north as the city of St. Petersburg and as far south as the city of Venice. So you're looking at a spread of about 40 miles that you could pick up their coverage and listen to their music. A communication tower doesn't have that type of range because you're establishing two-way communications. They're very small, and in an urban environment, you usually see them in a space where they're one and a half miles to three-quarters of a mile apart, so you really have to be where the use is.
Okay, and then last question. When you were showing the pictures of the buffers and the trees that are already there, is that guaranteed with approval that those would stay there? Is that how that works?
So I can't control urban canopy off-site, so if there was some rash of development that removed all the trees from north Titusville, but we will comply with the condition of approval for providing the landscape buffer.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say that, first of all, again, a very solid and in-depth presentation. I also appreciate that. From my understanding, you are, your group, you, T-Mobile, you guys are fine with the PNZ recommendation.
Matt and I, John, Mr. Mayor, yes, we are fine with the PNZ recommendation, and we adopted it into our application.
I would say, what I had heard, and I'm leaning into the PNZ recommendation, and I can certainly hear more, but that's where I'm at right now. And Vice Mayor.
I have to say that when I first saw this, I thought, that's the ugliest thing I ever saw. I was just like, in my city? No. And then city manager pointed out that there were other towers around, and I realized I'd been driving back and forth by them for years and never noticed them. So I have to say, I appreciate your presentation, it answered the questions I had, and after driving down Main Street past the tower and not noticing it again, I realized that, okay, we have to live with this. So I think that with adopting PNZ conditions, I'm fine.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Vice Mayor.
And again, that's where I was, and to get to the city manager's point, I think that the tower is, the word that comes to my mind is sleek. It's, it's, it's almost, depending on the sky color, it's almost stealthy. And I would also agree that I, you know, I guess one board's not going to be happy with me, but I don't see any reason to paint it blue. I think that the, the, whatever gray you called that, there you go. That's, to me, the stealthiest color of all. It doesn't have to match the sky, and again, you make a very good point. There's a reason that our, our jets are that color. So I, I thought it was, I agree with the PNZ. Member Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Very detailed presentation, I really appreciate that for sure. Most of my questions was answered. I, I saw discrepancy in there as I was looking at the pictures, and I realized it's 199 feet, but five feet of it is, is a lightning rod, for sure. The other question I had was, why aren't there any lights at night? But you said you've already taken care of that with the FAA, so that's, that's good. I'm with the rest of the council, you don't need to paint the thing. I mean, that just didn't make any sense at all. That's why I smiled when I saw it. And when you detailed it by showing a sky blue of a water tower in another city, you were right. I mean, it, the blue makes it stand out, and we're trying to hide the thing, so I really appreciate that. So I, I think where we are is what PNZ says, and I actually had a question about, oh, she wants to say something, but before you do, you know me, when it comes down to shrubbery being in industrial area, I just don't get it. So you got a, you got a five-foot fence, and now you want to put shrubs in front of it. I don't understand what, what are you trying to hide?
The ground, the equipment on the ground?
I like the equipment.
Oh, okay. But there, but the code does require a 10-foot landscape buffer whenever there is a high-security fence. However, as described, the variances that will not come to this council but will go to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals will, they can have the opportunity to make that decision unless this evening you set a minimum. They can't waive your specific requirement. So that's your choice as to whether you want to allow them to make that decision or for you to make, set a minimum.
Yeah, I, I don't want to push back at it if you don't have a problem with it.
Matt and I, John, no, we do not have a problem with it. I actually have a draft set of construction plans sitting in my infold, in my inbox that came in today. We're hoping to get them submitted to your staff by the end of the week, so that way they can get them, you can get the variance.
Well done, well done.
I do have a couple more comments when you get a chance.
Okay, I'm done.
Are you good? Yeah, go.
Okay, first of all, I misspoke when I said that I didn't, that the member voted no, didn't explain. He said that he thought that the proper landscaping was ideal, but he was not voting for the other conditions. I would like to say that staff does not support the condition of meet all the required LDRs. First of all, that's code, and we're required to do that, but secondly, that may cause a problem with the variances, because there could be a conflict between the required LDRs and the variances. So that may cause an issue that would be unintended to you. And secondly, the approval of not increasing any non-conformities, the staff already make sure that they do not increase non-conformities, that's the code. So again, that may run into an issue if you're talking about the variances that are being requested, not that, so I just want you to know that those two conditions may actually hamper what the applicant is trying to do here.
Very good. I think we're on the right track, but with that, applicant, we will call cards, and then you'll have an opportunity to come back after the cards.
Thank you.
We have Mr. O'Neill here too, I don't know if he wants to speak.
This is Matt and I, John. Mr. O'Neill has provided to you purely on a question and answer basis. He is my RF engineer, so unless you have questions for him, okay, thank you.
Right track, thank you for, thank you for coming up. Next card, please.
Last card is Stan Johnston.
I'm sorry, say it again. Thank you, sir. Next card? Do you have a card? Oh, well, it's different. Okay, I'm not going to get confused tonight again. All right. All right, we've called the cards. Applicant, you can come up and rebut the cards.
This is Matt and I, John, again, I have no rebuttal for you, but I do stand for any questions that you may have at this time.
I feel like we're heading in the right direction, so let's see where we go. I guess we go with a motion and see if we're close.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve conditional use permit. Application six says 2021 dash 15, was at ENIG Avenue, 199-foot T-Mobile monopole cell tower with number one and number four condition from PNZ.
Are we there?
Right.
We're good, all right. I have the exact correct motion. Good job.
Thank you very much.
From Member Jordan?
Can I?
No.
No.
Go ahead. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor.
I think we ought to say, provide a minimum of five-foot landscape yard buffer. I think that would be more appropriate.
What are we saying now?
We're saying a five-foot landscape yard buffer as opposed to ten, but it's going through, right, Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
And that's more favorable.
Well, they may say, no, we should have a seven-foot buffer, they may say we should five-foot buffer, we're just saying a minimum of five-foot.
I like that.
Yeah.
Because right now, the code requires 10.
And we can go with five.
Okay, okay.
How do you word that? Do we just, you just add that, you're good? Okay, we have the motion from Member Jordan, a second with an addition from Vice Mayor. Is that well said?
Not really, but we want to accept it.
No, 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 I'm just needing to know that we're good with that.
It is 10 till 9.
All right, roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Mayor and Council, we're on nine D, which is CUP seven twenty-two-one, and this is, in 2016, city adopted South Street Small Area Plan to provide strategic vision for the orderly growth and development of the central segment of State Route 405, which is South Street from Singleton Avenue to State Route 50, Cheney Highway. The subject property is within the small, South Street Small Area Boundary. The applicant proposes to construct five new buildings and fifty-five outdoor storage spaces for storage of recreational vehicles at the site. The applicant proposes a total of forty-six storage units with two different sizes, ten by ten, which is thirty-five units, ten by fifteen, which is eleven units. Office space will be located within fifteen hundred square feet of the building's nearest south property line. Each building is proposed to be one-story tall. Each of the total size of the five buildings is six thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. Staff recommends approval with conditions in your packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their November third, twenty-two-one meeting considered this item and recommended approval of the CUP seven twenty-two-one with staff recommendations and conditions. Motion was approved, seven-zero. Ms. Bisac is here to answer any questions that you may have on CUP.
Anything, Ms. Bisac?
I have a very brief presentation.
Perfect.
And I want to explain the conditions. This is the location of the property, and it's along South Street. And I know you can't really see the colors, but this shows that the South Street Plan recommends that this be an industrial use, but we recognize that there is residential to the east of this particular property, which is the reason for the recommendations that staff has. And you can see the property is heavily wooded currently, and there is heavy woods to the east, but there are two home sites, and I think that you can kind of see those as cleared. So the recommendation that we have is that the vegetated screen remain on the eastern boundary of the property. That will protect the residential area that's currently there. And the, as you can see, the development, those little lines there straight up and down are actually the retention area. So there will be, and then there's an area to keep to the east of that that they can keep as their twenty-foot vegetated buffer, and that will protect the property to the east. And the second issue is the fact that this small-area plan does, or the policy of the small-area plan is to ensure that there's adequate screening along the front of the property as it is butted from the public streets. And that's to keep the outdoor storage from being visible from the street. The current layout of the buildings, and those are shown in kind of that orange color, that would allow that buffering in the center area that looks like the tile pattern, that is where the outdoor storage would be. So as long as those buildings are laid out in that way, the staff doesn't feel that there's any additional buffering required. However, what we'd like to do is to say that should that concept plan be modified, and for whatever reason, that layout doesn't work, then we recommend that there would be a screening put in place so that it would be consistent with the small-area plan. The current layout, though, would not require any additional screening. And that's essentially my suggestion.
Very good.
And just let you know that the staff's review has found this consistent with the small-area plan, with the comprehensive plan. There's no issues related to noise, lighting, odors, and we also feel that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, especially the locational criteria.
Very good. Counsel, any questions? All right, applicant. Now, we're, went from in the hole to on deck to up the...
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for your time. Thank you for consideration. That's a tough act to follow, that one I'm coming up behind here. So I feel very ill-prepared, but just want to introduce myself, Brent Swanson, twenty-five-plus year resident of Titusville. Just trying to create a space here that we can provide off-site storage for the local community, you know, if there's any code enforcement issues or, you know, places for people to park RV and boat, as well as some storage for their RV and boat needs, whether it be life jackets, preservers, or anything like this. So just want to say hello and thank you for consideration, and if you have any questions, try to answer them.
Member Jordan?
This is a very easy one. I just don't know where you are.
We're on 405. We are north of Kilmerock, and we are south of Park Avenue on the east side.
In a good place.
Right across from Bobby Lane, the industrial park right there.
Right, right.
Right across from Bivard Uniforms.
Oh, okay.
So they would be to our west.
Across from Sid.
Exactly.
Right.
Ah, I know exactly where you are now.
Sid could answer any questions you have as well.
All right.
I think the hardest thing about this one is how long you had to sit there. I feel, I saw it work sometimes, but I personally think it's like, as Member Jordan said, this is a no-brainer. It just goes, it's in the right spot for the right usage. I'm excited about it, and I think it'll be very useful to some folks. But applicant, and we're going to call cards, and then if we need you again, we'll bring you up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cards, Ms. Clerk.
We also have a hard phone, Mr. Sid there. Don't know if he'd like to speak.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Good evening to you. Sitche Hayab Consulting Civil Engineers, thirty-six fifty Bobby Lane. We agree with the staff recommendation, and I want to thank the staff for doing such a very good job in describing the project. And, you know, if you have any questions, we agree with the conditions of approval. And since the staff, since the planning and zoning meeting, we came up with a low in-intensity development that would be incorporated into the site, too. So I think you would like that if it ever comes back to you. But the staff, we're going to work with the staff. We saved lots of trees on site, so I think it's a good development. It's all in all, reducing the amount of flow that goes out from the site and allowing for the water to go into the aquifer and actually create a little bit better system, you know, for an industrial park.
Very good. Very good. This is getting easier and easier. Thank you. Any other cards?
Last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer. I have nothing against this project, nothing at all. Fact is, on that last one I was speaking about, I was certainly approving the comprehensive plan amendment. So I didn't mention that, but I should have mentioned that. So in this one, I have nothing against it. However, what I mentioned on the last one was number eight. Same applies to this. It's not against this project at all. It's what you have a situation is for drainage. Is the city of Titusville has a plan for draining the city. They have a law to drain the city. Engineers have been designed this. It's been improved by the city, but the city ignores it. City ignores it, and in this case is that I mentioned to you just a little while ago, number eight, and where it says that the, here, I'll show it to you. This is a photo, one of many, another between, it's about two and a half miles long between Fox Lake Road and State Road 50. This is clogged. This is what it looks like. There's one of them that's open, one out of six that's open. In other words, when I say open, in other words, when I say clogged, there's still water going through here. But how long is it going to last? So what we have is a situation, and I'm not saying this project, but in this area, is that we have a drainage situation which you might say works right now, or let me say, it appears to work, but it cannot work continuing in the future. It's against the law. It's against your law. It's against FEMA and everything else. But yet, what do you do? Ignore it. Ignore it and disobey your own laws. The thing is, is you get a professional engineer who disagrees with me, what I do is, I report him, and he goes to the board. We're in that kind of situation. What kind of a nonsense does the city of Titusville going through? I worked for the city for years. Been a registered professional engineer for what, about forty-five years or so, forty-four, something like that? So anyhow, you keep on doing what you're doing, but like I said, it appears to work. The word is "appears." Wait till the big flood comes. Thank you. Hey, Mr. Johnston. All right. Any other cards? And Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve conditional use permit. Application number seven dash twenty-two-one, want storage.
I have a motion. Any second?
I would second, but I would ask that we add what the conditions as laid out by staff.
We agree with staff's recommendation.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. I'd like to call on you again because you were supposed to come back up and rebut. I didn't really see much to be rebutting, but I was going to give you a shot anyway.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We'll move forward on this. So we have the motion from Member Jordan. We have the second from Vice Mayor with the conditions. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you. Have fun. All right, city manager.
Onto ordinance's first reading. This is ordinance number thirty-three, twenty-two-one, Development Fees. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number thirty-three, twenty-two-one. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by incorporating and adopting fees related to building inspection and permit fees, fire permit and inspection fees, specialty event application fees, and community development fees, amending Chapter six Building and Building Regulations by amending Section six dash fifty-seven Application Form, and creating Section six A dash one Building Inspection and Permit Fees, amending Chapter nine Fire Prevention and Protection by amending Section seven, nine dash six Bonfires and Outdoor Rubbish Fires, and nine dash twelve Occupancy Inspection Fee Schedule, amending Chapter eleven Licenses and Regulations by amending Section eleven dash five oh two Permit Application, amending Development Review Procedures Manual by creating Section seventeen Fees, finding for findings, gratification, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be heard by city council on November twenty-third, twenty-two-one, at six-thirty. Actions required. Ms. Bisac is here to answer any questions that you may have.
No presentation? Okay, good. Hold on. We have Member Robinson.
This is, this, as I understand it, correcting the fees and adding?
No, sir, it's locating them in the code. We're not making any adjustments to the fee structure or any changes to the fees themselves.
Correct. These are existing fees. We're just having another location to make it more accessible when you go to municipal code versus just on a website.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any cards?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I have a number of objections, and I've voiced into you, and I've put them in writing to you, and I'm getting no responses as far as, for example, I've got these twenty-four horrible, atrocious atrocities. Well, that's sort of a double whatever. But the thing is, is the city's not responding because there's so much truth and facts that what I'm giving to you. What does this have to do with fees? It has a lot to do with it. And I'm not opposed to this. I put neither on my card, but some of my particular items do address this because when people are paying fees, you know, what are they getting? And in this case, when, for example, when we have our staff work on these projects for hours and hours on projects, and yet, we can't spend time to answer the question, why in the world is the city of Titusville not answering the question? Why has the city sprayed cars and people with piss and poop for months? And I have so many questions the city doesn't answer. In other words, we spend so much time on this stuff, and yet, there are, these are important issues that we do nothing about. What are our children and grandchildren going to think in years to come? This is in writing. This is in public records. It's going to be hard to destroy. I mean, you know, you put an atomic bomb and blow it up, but by golly, your names, these names, these council members and so forth, it'll last forever, as far as I can see. So I'm asking you to tell the truth. Don't tell the truth. That's one of the consequences. Maybe you'll be, maybe you'll have children like Mr. Madoff had. They hung themselves. Think about it, Mr. Jordan. Any other cards? That is the first reading. I don't see anybody else on council. That's the first reading. We take no action.
And we are, no old business. Of course, ten B was tabled. We're on to new business, and this is the disposition of surplus residential vacant lots. The Neighborhood Services Department maintains a list of vacant city-owned residential lots that may be suitable for affordable housing in conjunction with city grant programs. The list currently contains four lots, which are considered compatible for residential construction of single-family units. These remaining lots have resided on the list for over ten years. With no future plans, the city funded housing or other city uses for these lots, these lots are considered surplus and are available for disposition. Recently, staff met with the executive director of Urban Alliance of Bivard, Mr. Aaron Fason, to discuss the availability of city-owned lots for affordable housing and the options for the acquisition. Mr. Fason presented staff with a proposal, including in this report, to purchase these surplus lots at the twenty-twenty-one fair market value attained by the Bivard County Property Appraisers website. They are on ten twenty-six First Avenue, nine fifteen Knucklesworth Avenue, seven zero one Lucky Street, and four thirty-one Cannaveral Avenue. Historically, when disposing of lots maintained on this list, council was authorized the disposition of such properties in conjunction with affordable housing to be built on the site. This was done so by entering into a memorandum of agreement and land use restrictions with the purchaser for a specific timeframe. Staff is seeking council's direction on the disposition of the above enumerated lots to Urban Alliance of Bivard for the purpose outlined in the agency's proposal. If authorized to sell the property, the final sales documents will be placed on a future council agenda for approval. And Terry's here to answer any questions that you may have about this, and I believe there's some gentlemen that have been waiting anxiously to come forward.
Wake up. Terry, do you have anything first?
I'm here if you have any questions.
All right, I'd like to, I'm going to do this way I see fit, and that is that call it cards, call it applicant, whatever. I'd like leader of the group or you guys to come up and give me an idea of what you're thinking. And I will say that I have met with this group, and I have talked to them, and when I saw this and talked to city manager, I was very excited that they're trying to get something done. So I'll just take it from there.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor.
Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Aaron Fason, five thirty Locksley Court, Titusville. It's a pleasure to be before you guys today with this opportunity here. Again, so my name is Aaron Fason with Urban Alliance of Bivard. Again, our mission here is to impact the city of Titusville's violent population, if you will, by employing them. And one of those things to do is to get them work. Not only just give them work, also beautify and improve our neighborhood at the same time. Once Travis found that these lots were available, he contacted the city to purchase them. The whole point, again, is to build affordable houses. I don't know if you guys... I don't know if you guys know, but right now, the median income for the city of Titusville is forty-six thousand dollars. Forty-six thousand dollars. So when you do thirty percent of that, which means very low income, that leaves somebody making thirteen thousand dollars able to buy a house. HUD says that affordable housing is anywhere between one hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred and forty thousand. So let's just take somebody that's making thirteen thousand, less than fourteen thousand dollars a year. How can he afford to buy a brand-new home around one eighty to one ninety? And land prices in Titusville are just astronomically high. If you go to the average home over the last couple of years here in the city of Titusville, it says two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Well, that doesn't take into account that the vast majority, over thirty, forty percent of our homes, have been sold to investors. So because investors have been buying the house, it has kept the median home value very, very low, but it doesn't count that once they flip those homes, that those homes that are for sale, that the investors can buy, far exceeds two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So that's what we're here to do. By purchasing these lands, if the city of Titusville grants us these lands or allows us to purchase the land, and by all, by all means, we're not looking for you to give them to us. We're looking to buy them. All right? We're looking to buy them, build on them, and produce affordable houses, anywhere between one eighty, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. The reason why that's the price point, because it's very, very important, the city of Titusville's first-time home buyers program, that's their limits. Okay? I called them the other day, and they said that right now, they don't have any homes that are around the price point of one eighty to one ninety. Well, we can produce those. We can produce those with the help of the city of Titusville that provides these lots at a price point that helps us to keep these homes affordable. But to buy them at today's current market value, which is anywhere between thirty to seventy thousand dollars, we just can't produce homes, price range of one eighty to one ninety. So that's what we're here for today. Do you guys have any questions of me?
Member Robinson.
Yes. Do you understand the, you got a good idea, and I hear you understand that the restrictions of the land when you purchase it, because how long it had to be obligated for affordable housing? Do you understand that?
I do understand it, but that restriction only applies if you guys make it so. Okay, so if you're looking there, so staff is recommending their affordability period, which is what you're referring to. So if you guys stipulate that we buy this land with an affordability period, then yes, we understand that that applies. You don't make that a stipulation, because what we're trying to do is provide homeownership to the homeowners themselves. Okay? We do understand that, after talking with Brad Parrish, what our left and right limits are when it comes to affordability.
And you estimated cost per foot is going to be what in construction?
Can you speak up, Mr. Robertson? I have a hearing impairment.
Me too, so. I don't mind speaking. People say I'm too loud when I speak. What is your cost per square foot in the construction?
Okay, well, this is Mr. Smith, Oliver Smith. He's a general, a state general contractor. He sits on the board of our nonprofit. Okay, I'm a real estate investor, and I own a renovation company also. So we're gonna be hands-on. The majority of nonprofits that develop in communities, they have a middleman. So we can cut out the middleman price. So now we're looking at from anywhere from seventy-two dollars a square foot to eighty dollars a square foot. Depends on with a garage or without a garage. You know, and the majority of homes in our community do not have a garage, but we have many floor plans to pick from. Okay, like I just said, I'm an investor, so I, excuse me, I own twenty-nine lots in the DeLeon area, okay, which is a undeveloped area in our community. Okay, it's a underprivileged, overlooked. Okay, so what we've seen is a void in the community. The city of Titusville is expanding. It's booming, okay, with construction everywhere, but where? The DeLeon area, the Brown's Apartments area, the Pembroke area. Okay, we're getting left behind. So what we're coming to propose is to build, okay, for a lesser profit, okay, than any other investors come in to build. Okay, we have all the funding. Okay, only thing we're probably asking for the city of Titusville to make the process a little more lax, okay, or inviting for investors to come in and develop in these areas. Another problem is the lot, the width of the lots have to be seventy-five by a hundred.
You need a variance.
Yes, so I mean, if every lot in our community is fifty by a hundred, every lot that get built on gonna need a variance. You know?
And these homes are block or framed?
Yes, block.
All right, those are the things I had. I agree that it's needed. I agree that it's about the transition and the obligation of whether that's going to be, because I know what the city is going, what we're going to want is that we have a guarantee that for a set period of time that these homes are gonna be available for a certain income, certain income. Otherwise, we're not accomplishing anything. And if we don't get, if there's some way that we can work, you and Terry can work and present that, is that they will be available for that, or because if they don't transition from, you can build a home and resell it for a price and going down the road, and all of a sudden, this home sitting here on Kennelworth, I know where the property is, on Kennelworth, someone could be selling it for, you know, that it's not reasonable for the individual that we, the city, gave you the property for. Because I've seen a lot of that in Merritt Island, and, but it's gonna have to be something worked out where that there is that, and probably Terry can answer that question, or she's answering questions. I think it's a good idea.
One of the ways that we've already talked about, discussed, to address that issue is a land trust, putting the prop, the land itself in a land trust that would protect it to be in perpetuity, to be affordable. But again, so we've addressed those things, and we're waiting for the council. If you make that a stipulation, we're prepared to answer that.
I think it's a great thing. I think it's a good thing. I would, based on, you know, I don't know if you got any history of your work and so forth, examples of your work, that would have to come into play somewhere.
So to speak to capacity, again, so right here, RJ Construction has been like thirty years, both in the government sector as well as in the private sector, and that's why we have become part of our board.
Good. I think it's a good thing. Those are my questions.
Another aspect of it is apprenticeship program, to where it's a lot of violent crime happening in Titusville, okay, in the DeLeon area. And our idea is to take what we call at-risk convicted felons. You have convicted felons, and you have at-risk convicted felons. There's a huge difference. Okay, I myself is a convicted felon. I did ten years in federal prison for a first-time felony, no violence, no victims, right here at the city of Titusville. Okay, I served my time, paid my debt to society, and I feel like I owe my community. Okay, so that's why I'm so passionate about it. Okay, so what we plan to do is take at-risk convicted felons and give them a skill set, okay, to help them feed theyself, instead of feeling hopelessness, or despair, or having to do a menial labor, you know, because it's just too many guys in the community that don't have a skill set. And you'll be surprised how they wanna learn. I mean, honestly, we've been doing this out of pocket for like the last three years. Okay, so it was just brought to our attention when Mr. Mayor, when Diesel, Mayor Diesel, got in the chair, and we started getting a report with him. You know, and he has a big interest in the community, the chief of police. He's heavily involved with our nonprofit, and he's one hundred percent behind us, you know? Any other questions anybody has?
Well, I got a couple lights, but before I do that, I hope that you guys can see when I said I've met with these young men, and no one since he was a little tyke. It's an impressive group with a passion to make something happen. We don't wanna talk about it, we wanna be about it. And that's what I see coming out of here. I've always had the saying, you know, some people walk the walk, and the other people talk, excuse me, talk the talk, and other people walk the walk. These guys walk the walk. I'm not saying where we're going to know. There's a lot of dislike everything else we've done tonight. There's this loophole, not really, you know, we gotta go through this hoop. Whatever it is, though, I wanna see if we can't make something happen here, and to stand up as an applicant, in my mind, to present how you've presented. I don't think there's going to be a lot of things you hadn't thought about. I'll just leave it at that, and I'll move over to Member Jordan.
Thank you. I appreciate you all wanting to do stuff like this. I think it's definitely needed for sure, and for African-Americans, for sure, to see African-Americans doing something in the community is the right thing to do. And I appreciate your honesty as far as where you are in life, which is commendable. My first question actually is, from what I understand, when it comes down to surplus property, there's a process you have to go in order to sell the property, right? Because they have an organization, and it's not a government organization, do we not have to present those pieces of property to other government entities or we sell to the public?
In the past, the city has donated property for affordable housing in two different instances. They've also donated property once to a women's shelter, and had money actually to assist in the renovation of that property. So I believe that in the, for a purpose such as affordable housing, it would be entirely consistent to sell that to someone. Now, the two organizations that have been provided free property were called CHODOS, which means that they had been through a process, that they were certified, that they were a community housing development organization. I don't believe these gentlemen have done that, but they are not asking, on the other hand, a little bit differently, they're not asking for the property to be donated, they're willing to sell it. And I think Terry can tell us how long these properties have been on our list of available properties.
So back in two thousand and eight, we started a program called In-Fill Development, and that was an initiative to try and create opportunities with city-owned properties where they could be used for affordable housing development. These four lots, there was two others that have since come off the list because they were donated or to a housing project. And so these lists consisted of lots that staff felt were suitable for affordable housing, either they were a standard lot or could potentially hold an affordable housing unit. So they've been on the list since two thousand and eight. We have entertained looking for developers in the past, and we haven't had any recent inquiries on these properties. So this is a welcome inquiry for these properties.
There is a challenge, though. If I'm hearing correctly, the lot size is small, right?
There are four properties. Two of them are smaller than the requirement for the zoning code. However, the code on non-conforming lots says that the building official may issue a building permit for a single-family dwelling on any non-conforming lot, provided the remedy set forth in this section cannot be complied with. And that section is that where two or more non-conforming lots are contiguous, that they would be combined. I did not know this gentleman owned twenty-nine lots prior to this evening, so I don't know if he owns any lots contiguous to these two non-conforming lots, which are the ones on First Street and Lucky Street. The other two are conforming. And that's why we would not recommend that any money change hands and they actually purchase these properties until they've had a chance to talk to us, show us exactly what they want to do on the properties. They may even want to wait until they find out if they get a variance or not, because for two of these lots, they may have some problems unless they're willing to make much smaller homes.
And that was my concern also, because you know, I want you to have a piece of property you can't do it with. But I do, hold on a second. I do have a concern. You said you have twenty-nine lots. Are these empty lots?
Yes.
So why didn't you start off with a lot?
I mean, we already one step ahead of you.
How's that?
I mean, because like you say, we already started.
So are you building on those lots?
No, we in the process. We actually, my trust packet should be back this week, and we talked to Mr. Parrish. Okay, from our understanding, what he said is affordable housing get put to the front of the list. Okay, and the parcel of land is on Park Avenue and Garden Street. Okay, so the problem is, is you have what's called a comparative market analysis, okay? New construction right now in Titusville is going anywhere from three hundred to three fifty and higher, okay, in any neighborhood almost. Okay, the neighborhood we just spoke of on Gale Street in the Lincoln Park area, you have three homes listed for two forty-nine, two forty-eight, and two forty-seven. Okay, if I'm not mistaken, two of them already sold. Okay, so in the Park Avenue area, the comps are three fifty. Okay, so one of the biggest problems is if I come in and I'm building affordable homes, and the max listing price is two forty-three, then the other real estate investors, you know, their comparative market analysis go down. Okay, so now the lots that we're proposing to buy, they would never comp out at two fifty. All right, they'll comp out, especially what we proposing to build on them. Okay, they will be in affordable range around one eighty-one. We actually wanna be up under two hundred, so that's what's needed. We don't wanna come in and be selling two fifty, two eighty, and the property tax go up. Also, now, Ms. Brown, Ms. Jones, Ms. Johnson, they can't afford to live in their homes because they own a fixed income. You know, you got to have balance. So with my twenty-nine lots, I mean, you're a businessman, you're a businessman, you know, we got to make some profit somewhere. So it's all about balance. You know, we have a for-profit, and we have nonprofit. Yes.
I like your answer.
There's not gonna be a question you have. We ain't got an answer for it, I'm telling you.
I just certainly want you all to be successful, for sure, but you haven't built one home yet.
Not in the city of Titusville, we haven't.
Okay, so was RJ Construction?
Yes, ARJK Construction.
Where has he built homes?
He's out of the, he out of the Cocoa area, actually.
So he's built homes in Cocoa?
Yes, but he's a statewide general contractor.
I understand that, Pop, but he's built home in Cocoa?
Cocoa, Orlando, yes. Bureau, no, for thirty years. His father was a general contractor also.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I like the idea. My concern is the same as Member Robinson. How do we make sure that it stays affordable housing? And I think one of you guys said land trust, and I think I'd rather leave it up to Terry to sort of start figuring out what's the best way to bring this back to.
One of the things that's important for the city of Titusville, we don't want this to be our last project. We wanna keep this going. It's very important that being from Titusville, working with you guys. So we're willing to conform to just allows us to still build, make a profit. So by all means, I look forward to, I talk to Terry quite often, Nick, and so whenever you guys come back, we're willing.
Well, I definitely wanna see it, you see it work. I don't, I'm not the expert to tell you all that has to happen to make it work, and that's why I'm gonna look over at this table. And you're asking for advisability, I don't really know what to advise, so I need to know what the next step is. Say again?
I believe the attorney is desperate to get your attention.
You know, you know why I'm struggling with Richard over there? I just now figured it out. Member Riley keeps popping up. Number thirteen, Member Riley. And I kept looking around and, see?
The names are changed to protect you.
So Member Riley? What'd he say? Yeah, there you go. Member Riley.
I'll take that. Member Jordan had asked previously some of the procedures. I just wanna point out for Council. I just want to point out for council that Florida statute 166, 166.0451 is titled Disposition of Municipal Property for Affordable Housing. And subsection two of that states that the properties identified by the city as appropriate for use as affordable housing on their list adopted by the city may be offered for sale and the proceeds may be used to purchase land for the development of affordable housing or to increase the local government fund earmarked for affordable housing, or may be sold with a restriction that requires the development of the property as permanent affordable housing, or may be donated to a nonprofit housing organization, and I think that's what staff was referencing earlier, is a nonprofit housing organization for the construction of permanent affordable housing. So I think what you're directing potentially staff is looking at that aspect of whether or not to sell this with the restriction that requires the development of property as permanent affordable housing.
So if I may, I can give you a little summary on previous transactions involving the disposition of city-owned lots that have involved other housing, affordable housing developments. And you have in the grant world, which is normally what we're dealing with when we're developing affordable housing, is you have a resale restriction or you have a development restriction, and they're, they're different things. So you could have restrictions that say, a land use restriction, this property must be developed for this purpose and must be retained for that purpose for a certain time period. You could also have a resale restriction, which I believe is what I heard from the applicant, is that they intend for this to kind of be a recycle of these homes, where you could have a resale restriction that says if that person that obtains a home from their organization is restricted to selling it to another low-income family. And those are two ways that you could ensure the affordability of that property for years to come.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So is there a timeline? Let's just say we donate the property or they purchase the property, is there a timeline that the entity has to develop the property?
That's usually spelled out in the agreement. Historically, we've done two years with the other four properties, and we had a land use restriction of 15 years.
Okay, so if, if you have two years to develop and...
I'm sorry, it was 20 in some cases, because for new construction.
But if you, if we sold the land to them or gave it to them and they had to develop it within two years, what happens after the two years?
The city has an option of regaining the property, or the agency has an option to transfer the property to another community housing development organization that can develop the property within the time period.
I heard you all say that you have the resources to purchase the property. Is that from grants or where does that come in?
Out of his pocket.
I'm sorry?
Out of his pocket. We're paying for cash.
And that's, I guess the property value is just coming off of the tax rolls, correct?
Yes, what you see there is the value, the 2021 value on the Brevard County property.
Is that what we normally do, just, is that what we normally do when we sell property? Or we haven't sold?
We haven't sold any.
Okay, this will be the first time. Well, is, is it reasonable for us, I guess you, you're saying that the law says that we could give it to them for affordable housing?
To a housing organization.
To a housing organization.
Correct.
Okay.
That's what we reference, like, like your Habitat.
They're not a housing organization. Okay, so they would have to purchase the property.
This project actually is getting for us to become a CHODO. In order to become a CHODO, you have to have a project, complete a project. And so we're working with Mr. Allen from county to, to process our CHODO application as well.
You all have done your homework, that's for sure, and I, I appreciate that, for sure. Thank you so much.
I never had it down.
We actually talked with this Coco also, you know, the fellow some, some, oh, him, only come housing that way, but Councilman Vanderherns. City of Coco actually have a little more lots, I want to say they got like 31 lots.
You went after that too?
Excuse me?
You went after that too?
Honestly, I'm worried about Titusville. But that's, that's my passion, over here 42 years. I was once part of the problem, where I can kind of see the void, I can see what's needed in the community, got a very good reputation in the community, pretty good influence. Just really want to make a difference.
Right, it's, it's real interesting, especially since I'm in education, to learn a trade is extremely important, they say, and to be a carpenter or plumber, electrician is extremely important. So you're going to have a training side of this thing, which is really good, because most of the time, especially our African-American boys, don't get that training. I've been extremely lucky, because my dad and I built houses growing up, so I know all of this stuff. And we have saved so much money in my married life, because I did it all myself. But there's so many people who can't do that, and that's why we've got a lot of handymen who's making a lot of money these days, because into it. So I, I had this all for sure. That portion, to me, is extremely important, if you're going to train these kids, these guys, a, a trade that they can take for the rest of their lives.
Campaign, excuse me, campaign is called Jobs for Guns. You know, to remember, if you remember, a few years ago, they did a campaign where they was giving gift cards for guns?
Yep.
So our ideal is jobs for guns, and the jobs come from building relationships. Okay, building relationships, the chief of police, like I just told you, he's heavily involved, he has a few friends, I have friends that own businesses, I hire a few of them myself, and you'll be surprised how many of them really want to be working. It's like a dead-end job, you understand, to where all of us going to be in there. At the time of getting that job, we thought that job was the job for us. You know, then we outgrew the job, more bills came, family group or whatever. So the problem in the street life is a lot of people outgrow it, but they still stagnate and that's a revolving circle. I was just able to pull myself out, you know, and I'm going to pull a few more out also, you know, but I mean, I can't say the word by myself. So that's why we're asking for a little help.
And that's a good way to let me, allow me to say this, because I think of the, we were talking about vocational training and getting jobs and building houses and all the things you're doing, and, and most of the time when we have people, and I'm not going to say it's in the community or it's over in Hicker Hill, but people come to us and say, well, why don't you do this? Why don't you, you guys aren't saying, why don't you do this? You're saying, help, you know, help us do this. And, and I think that needs to be, be noted. So with that, go ahead and sit down, guys, and, because, well, yeah, because I'm going to ask again, and maybe you guys can help me with that. What are we trying to do right now? What do we need to do?
If you tell us to, that you're interested in selling this land to this organization, then we would meet with them, we would understand completely, A, what they want to build on these lots, to make sure that the lots are going to meet their needs, and then we could come back and give you the conditions and an agreement of sale for each individual. Our attorney would help us put that together. We have some examples that we've done in the past, and it would include the affordability period, perhaps the time length for the amount of time that they have to do, move forward and that kind of thing. And then you could determine at that time if that contract was sufficient, and then they could go forward.
What you just said.
Absolutely.
I'm agreeing with that. Is that consensus, you guys good?
Yes, yes, I, I mean, that was, that was perfect, because I really didn't know where to go with that.
I think we may have a card as well.
Yeah, we will, we will, yeah. So, um, thank you guys for applying to do this. And like I said, it's, it's nice to have people say, help us, help you. So, all right, call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer. I have a handout on this. Only gave it to Wanda, because I just didn't dismay it, just right before Gil coming here. But about 35 years ago, a lot on First Avenue, 1026, came up for sale. City Titusville selling it, anyone who want to buy it. And so I looked and I said, city, don't sell that lot. You need to do something about it. There's a big 48-inch pipe going through that pipe, through that lot, and you shouldn't sell it. So what did they do? They took it off and didn't sell it. That's maybe 35 years ago. They said, you need to put an easement on there through that, through that, for that 48-inch pipe. So in about 2004, now I'm employed by the city of Titusville. So I was given a number of lots that's for the city of Titusville to sell. What did I think about it? And I said, well, that lot, they shouldn't sell that lot on, on, on First Avenue. Why? Because there's a pipe going through that lot, 48-inch, huge pipe, you need to put an easement through it, you need to get the surveyors through it. Now, I'm talking to Mr. Stauffer's group. I said, you need to put an easement through that to, to let anybody know what's going on there. And so, so I talked to them about that, and they, and they said, yeah, well, we need to do that. And I talked to the surveying department, which is in Public Works, not Water Resources, and I said, well, why in the world, why don't they just get, hire you guys to, to do the, the legal, legal descriptions for those easements? They said, that's too much money. So here we are now, again, after all these years. And so what I did is today, I looked at it again, and what did they do? On this, on this drawing, you'll see, is, is over here on Fourth Avenue, somebody built a, a, a building that looks like maybe a quadruplex or duplex on top of that 48-inch RCP pipe. Illegal. That's what we have right now. So we talk about nonsense and silliness and stupidity in the city of Titusville. So here's an example of it. You're not listening to me. The same's happening with, with spraying, spraying people with sewage and so forth like that. You're not listening. I'm a professional engineer. You can't sell, go ahead and sell that lot, but it's, it's not worth what you're selling it to them for. It's a pig in a poke.
All right, so we are now, we're, we've done our...
Yeah, we're, we're good, we have your guidance, we'll, we'll come back to you. Yes, sir.
All right, petitions and requests, second time. I'm sorry, what were you, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Member Robinson, go ahead.
I think I'll have some questions.
Go ahead.
Yes, I, I, I think that, and I know the staff will, will do it, do it, and I know that those lots are going to, not going to be easy lots to, to build upon, and I know that you will, will talk through all of that, because those things that, it's, it's some reasoning behind all the why they admit like that. So I want to, you know, that, as you guys try to come up with, you know, the, the best thing, but conform, you know, there are some issues in, in the ground.
All right. Thank you, Member, I'm sorry I missed that. And I will simply add, you know, it's an old saying, you may have never heard it, but where there's a will, there's a way. I've seen your will. And boy, you got answers too. I like that. We'll get back together, thank you. Uh, okay, now we're to petitions and requests, round two. Nothing, nothing? Wow, okay, thank you very much. Mayor and council reports. Uh, I've just got two things, real quick. One was, I just wanted to note how well I thought we represented at the League of Cities yesterday. Ms. Stokel, you can be proud of, of yourself and all of us, except they came out late for dinner. But anyway, I, I thought it was, I know that was a good time to, to be there with everybody. And I also want to add that, you know, it's a very important week, specifically a very important day on November 11th, Veterans Day. So, you know, my hats off and my, my thank you to all veterans everywhere. And, and I just appreciate that. I know we have a couple of events coming up Thursday and Friday, and see what we can do about that. Outside of that, I have Member Stokel.
Yes, wanted to update you guys on a couple of things from the Florida League of Cities going on at the state level legislatively. Couple of things, I mentioned it, I think, before about there's a bill being, that's been filed regarding every ordinance change that we would potentially do would require some type of business impact study. We do think that that will probably end up getting passed. However, so this, the league stance on this is to try to tweak it and make it where it's actually beneficial for the cities and not an unfunded mandate. A lot of the smaller cities will find this very burdensome. Every time you do an ordinance change, it's very vague, there's just a lot of work that needs to be done with it. So that's one of the things, that's a big one that we're working on. Good news with the smoking bill that passed the first Senate committee unanimously, so it is doing well, but it normally does do well in the Senate side. We are waiting on the first committee hearing with the House bill that Representative Fine has filed, so I will keep you guys posted on that. I am very hopeful that it will actually pass this time. Another one that they're talking about is when we do our financial disclosures for when we run for office, that form, they are trying to make us do, I think, the same financial disclosure form that the state does, which is a lot more in-depth. So they are, they are worried, the league stance, we're a little bit worried that it might deter some people wanting to run for local government, it's very in-depth form. So we're monitoring and watching that one. Also, one that Representative Fine just filed is a local ordinance, or a local bill that would potentially make the local races' school board and city races partisan, so it would be noted on the ballot. So I am working to find out more information regarding that. I will keep you posted on that as well. Also, I know when I was up in Tallahassee, met with Representative Placencia. If there, I can't talk to you guys about it because of Sunshine Law, but if you guys think that there are any projects potentially that the state could fund, please reach out to him. He is very open to ideas, and now is the perfect time, so please take advantage of that. Lastly, action item I would like to request, I believe it's already been budgeted for, but request funding for Legislative Action Days, that is coming up in February, in the annual conference, which will be in next August for the Florida League. But I, it does have to go through council approval.
Well, do we need specific dates yet, or do we need to do now?
Um, they're typically, so I typically go to three with the Florida League every year, one in this past November, the annual conference in August, and legislative in February, so typically I just bring it before you guys.
I'm all for so moved, but I just want to know if we need to get a date and say we can go to this one or this one, or whatever. You're saying no, I'm good.
I don't think so, yeah. Because they're pretty standard and published.
That's sort of getting a nod down there.
Yes, sir, what, what we do, since we went to the GSA rates, it, it will be a GSA rate or my approval to expand it beyond that, so you have a set rate for that travel and it is budgeted.
Okay, well then, let's get a motion and do it correctly. We got it so moved in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes?
That is the end of my report, thank you, guys.
Vice Mayor.
Actually, I have two things. We had talked a month ago about legislative. This was something that bothered me. I know Roberts, I have 15 minutes. This was something that bothered me. You know, last year, we had the guy that was fishing with the AK strapped around him, and I understand this year they're coming back and they want to be in Sandpoint Park. And I got to tell you, I got a problem as a mom, as a grandmother, of having the thought of taking my child or my grandchild to a park with a guy sitting there with an AK strapped around. So I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'm thinking open carrying of guns in a park, especially assault weapons, is just wrong.
City Attorney?
So what do, can we do something?
No, we are preempted from regulating weapons. Now, if you're talking about wanting a legislative priority to a deal with that, I thought maybe that's where you were going, but we...
That's what I'm talking about, yes.
We cannot take action and create any ordinances regulating fire.
I would not ask us to do that. I would not ask us to do that, which will make you happy. But I would like to see us look at it as a legislative priority. And I don't know if we're too late now, but I, I just really hate the idea of seeing kids in a park with people carrying those kinds of guns.
Yeah, we've transmitted our priorities already, but that's like Member Stokel suggested, perhaps that's something that you could bring up to your individual legislator.
Yeah. So, and then the good news is, a week from Thursday is the open house for the Boys and Girls Club, which is right behind Mr. Fason's office. And it's done, and they have a director, they're starting to take applications. We have, the parish has also given us money to do Blanton Park. So they've already written a check, they've already started working on the engineering studies, the plans for the park. And we did reach out to Coach P, and the idea is to use that money for an all-inclusive playground for Sandpoint Park. And parish has offered money toward that also. So hopefully, we'll have two really nice playgrounds and two really nice parks and a place for kids to go. I don't think I'm going to get a halo out of this.
I see nobody else, city.
Yes, sir, I've got two action items for your consideration. The first is the CBDG grant funding special council meeting. We've got proposed dates and secondary dates and tertiary dates for your consideration. January 18th, which is a Tuesday at 5:30. Second possibility is Thursday, January 20th at 5:30. And the third option would be Thursday, January 27th at 5:30.
It's sort of like Thursday, I don't know about you guys.
I prefer Tuesday.
You prefer Tuesdays?
Only because Thursdays are my late day at work because those Tuesdays are already set aside, so I'm used to being early. I know.
Tuesdays I die because we have Rotary at seven.
I'm hearing from the clerk, we have a card. I guess, I got to believe it's you, Stan. What's, what's the card on?
On the city manager's report. If there's an action.
Oh.
Regarding, he wants to tell us what times we need to do our thing.
Well, guess we have a card, right? Oh, no, I only vote on it.
I don't think we're voting, I think we're picking cards.
Yeah, you have to vote on it.
Oh, you guys just kind of got an advisability, it works for us, okay, let's go. I don't remember ever voting on same lesson. I don't think we've ever voted on, I think it says, hey, how's the 18th, we're good, okay, we got it.
If you guys can come to a consensus, and I don't think that will be a vote.
I, hold on, I'm trying to figure this out.
Do you have a comment that's relative, relevant to the meeting times?
So what are you saying? That's a, that's a vote?
If we're going, if he's asked for a vote, if it's relevant.
All right, card. I see you, thank you so much.
Okay.
Good luck.
When you set up a meeting, talking about the city of Titusville set up a meeting, they should do so so that, for example, they advertise it that it's correctly. And recently, what, what the city of Titusville did is they had simultaneously a TEC meeting and a council meeting. I couldn't attend both of them. I had plans to attend both of these meetings, but I couldn't do it. So I got in there late at the TEC meeting. Furthermore, the city of Titusville advertises through its, it advertises meetings. For example, the parish hospital, Jordan's gone, they advertise the wrong time, they've been doing it for months and months and months. And always the post there, post times. So, you know, I'm, I'm just getting fed up with, with the city of Titusville, with their negligence, for example. I just gave you, I gave you example of about, for example, the not, not putting the easements on pipes, which was required by the project, a federal project. And now the city of Titusville, they, they do things like, for example, planning meetings at the same time and, and posting meetings at the wrong time. So when you do something on this, I want you to do it correctly, please do it correctly. And just so much nonsense, the city of Titusville, bungling. Thank you, bye.
January 18th is a Tuesday. Yes, sir.
I can go 18th.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Thursday, the 20th, which is that same week, and then the following Thursday, which is the 27th, because you got a council meeting that following Tuesday, that week.
Thursday.
Tuesdays are easier for me just because she already makes me late, early shift because of council, but if I knew in advance if, I could probably switch one of those to Thursday if that's better for you guys, I can just let her know in advance.
I'm good either way, y'all just tell me. 18th.
So Tuesday, the 18th at 5:30 will be the CBDG special grant funding.
Oh, you're saying seven at five? Five?
So, so you want Tuesday, January 18th at 5:00?
5:00.
The second one is we're beginning to go into budget again. So we have some proposed dates with our facilitator, Kristin Baki. The proposed date is Saturday, February 5th, between 9:00 and noon. The secondary date would be February 19th, between 9:00 and noon.
February 5th and what?
19th.
Those are both Saturdays.
I might not be available on the 5th, but if everyone, if that's better for everyone, I'm, I'm just letting you.
Be honest with you, I, nobody really, sometimes, up between now and then, we're a couple months off, but right now, I'm clear on either.
Yeah, I prefer the 19th if possible.
What do we call that?
This is the budget workshop. This is the facilitated first meeting that we have to begin the 22 budget.
Back in group system.
So the...
What time does that at?
09:00 to noon. I think it's daylight then.
Yeah.
That's AM, not PM. There's one.
I've got one more after that, but I'm trying to, the mayor's still digesting.
Yeah, he is, you forget it, y'all just remind me. Go ahead.
Okay, what I'm hearing is several of the council members have offered February 19th between 9:00 and noon.
Yes, 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 yes.
So the final one is the, the second portion of that will be a staff report back from her. So the proposed dates for that would be either Tuesday, March 15th, or Thursday, March 24th, both at 5:30. But remember, she'll do the report and then this will be a report out to council, yeah?
15th or 24th?
March, March 15th, which is a Tuesday, at 5:30, or March 24th, which is a Thursday at 5:30.
Oh, no. Okay, let's do the 15th.
The Tuesday, the 15th works.
So Tuesday, the 15th at 5:30. Okay, in my final, which is an information, action, not an action item, it's an information item, it's your next meeting, the outside agency appointments for council. I'll, I'll need you to kind of take a look at this and tell, tell staff if you want to change any of those positions. And that will be a deliberation and a, you know, I want to do this, I don't want to do that kind of thing. And we put the current one in there of your current appointments for your consideration. And my final thing is, as mayor suggested, busy week for veterans, the 11th at 11:00 is Veterans Day, formerly in the United States. There will be a ceremony for veterans on November 11th at 10:00 at the Veterans Park, operated by the Legion Post One Ceremony. So with that, thank you for your service, sir, and questions?
Nobody else? Thank you for your service, thank you for service, thank you for service. Anybody else? Dismissed. Thank you.